Vice Mayor Salazar.
Here.
Mayor Medina.
Here. If you would, to the best of ability, rise and join all of us, the three council members. And Linda is coming in too, and Linda will join us as well for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
By the United States of America. And to the republic. For which it stands. One nation.
Your God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
That was better for us.
I think it was, but obviously when we're all together, it makes it really easy. Let's move on to public comments for items that are not on the agenda. And we do have a member that, a resident would like to speak and address. If there's anybody else in the audience that would like to speak, if you would please go ahead and raise your hand, and I'll turn it over to the city clerk.
Okay, the first speaker is Simon Mizola. Simon, I'm trying to bring you in the room, just one moment. Hi, Simon, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, we can hear you too, whenever you're ready.
Great, I can't see anybody. Is there, are we on that kind of Zoom or a different kind of Zoom?
We're on regular Zoom. I don't know, I don't, we're not on anything special.
The only thing I can see is a timer.
Okay, as long as you see that right now, that's important.
Can I see the other city council members so I can see who I'm addressing?
Unfortunately, I don't, I don't know how to troubleshoot that with you right now.
I think we're all here, aren't we?
Yeah.
Simon, typically that's a setting with your, with your computer, there should be two separate screens. And so maybe if you move your screen around, your primary screen may be the screen that has the timer.
Um, when it went to timer, it took over the entire screen. And I don't seem to have an option. Let me try exiting full screen. Now that didn't, I mean, that changed it from full screen to half screen, but I still can't see anyone.
Simon, do you have an option up near the upper right-hand corner that says, it's got a little grid and it says either speaker view or gallery view?
Um, I do know of that thing, it is not there. Um. Hmm. Okay, well, I guess I can give it a shot, speaking to a timer. So you'll have to forgive me for the lack of eye contact.
No, no worries, thank you.
All right, so city council and mayor, I'm here to make a complaint. And I'm sorry to be here doing that, but I feel that it's my responsibility, as well as it's in my interest as a resident of the city. You know me from my involvement with the city council from a couple of years ago on the cell tower issue, and I'm back here because of that. Four of the five people on the city council were city council members when we appealed a cell tower permit at 123 Elm. And the city council voted unanimously to grant our appeal. When it did so, it did so on probably the only grounds that are available to city government to refuse these things, which is a concept called aesthetics. Since then, the city council punted, and I hope you don't mind me being direct. You've heard this before because I said it when you were going to do it. What you did was you took the statute that we had, which was a better one than we have now. And you took the authority for appeal away from yourselves and you gave it to the city manager. And at that time, I asked you not to do it. I criticized the changes because they were bad. And I criticized the process. Well, as you probably know, we just went through the first round of that process, and it was a bad one. Verizon is seeking seven cell tower permits. Many people appealed those permits to the city manager, and the city manager denied every appeal. That's exactly what I said would happen. And you are responsible for that action, and you are responsible for correcting it. We do not want 5G or 4G cell towers in our neighborhoods. They can be in appropriate places in our city, but not next to our homes, not right outside the bedroom windows of the residents and their children. But that is exactly what you caused when you moved this appeal authority away from yourselves and to the city manager. The city manager's reasons rubber stamped exactly what telecom wanted. He did not give any credence to aesthetics. He approved the exact tower that the city council said was aesthetically unacceptable in residential neighborhoods. This is what I said would happen. It has happened. You need to correct it. You need to change the law so that you are the final authority on appeals. You need to require your city manager to enforce the aesthetic restriction and enforcement ability that this town has. And I have to say, I'm very displeased with the city manager's actions. They are not taken on behalf of the residents of the city of San Bruno.
And thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Any other hands up, Melissa?
No.
I'm just gonna do a quick double check, I do not either. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number four. So just for council, if you, if you follow. And you can remake some changes to the agenda. Under conduct of business should have the item of adopted resolution authorizing the placement of the monument plaque in remembrance of the 10 years. We're gonna take that first, then we'll move on to the study session as normal. And we'll obviously go with the, the grade separation at Scott, and then we'll move into discussion of possible project initiatives for potential funding for measured cave funding. Any questions, we all good? Okay, so let's go to item number four, conductive business. I'm just gonna go ahead and read it. Adopt resolution authorizing the placement of monument plaque in the remembrance of the 10 years that have passed since the 210 PG&E explosion and fire and appropriate funds in the amount of not to exceed 12,000 from the park and loop fund, city manager.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, the public, Javon Grogan, city manager. I am carrying my screen now. Melissa, if you can open the ability for me to share my video as well, that would be helpful. So I'm here tonight to present to you a item that will be a part of remembering the events that took place on September 9th, 2010. And so, as we all know, the Earl Glenby Park was established after that event through the rebuilding of the community. There's both a upper and a lower park. Within the upper park, there are benches with the names of each one of the eight individuals that lost their lives. However, there is not a monument or anything within that park to articulate what happened on September 9th and the events that transpired from that. As we approached the 10-year anniversary of that event, staff working with the mayor and talking to a number of people in the community came up with the idea to install a remembrance monument that will essentially codify those events in stone. So individuals that from, once the monument is installed in perpetuity, go to the park will, will know what happened there. And so, we have contacted a number of vendors and received a quote to have a monument stone engraved and installed. Up on the screen now is the text, and it says, in remembrance of the 2010 gas pipeline explosion and fire, 10-year memorial, gone but not forgotten. It lists the names of each of the eight individuals, and then says, and I'll read, at 6:11 PM on September 9th, 2010, a 30-inch diameter natural gas pipeline owned by Pacific Gas and Electric exploded in San Bruno's Crestmore neighborhood. A loud roar and shaking led some residents of the area, first responders and media to initially believe that a large jetliner had crashed. The explosion caused a fire which quickly engulfed nearby homes. Emergency responders from San Bruno and nearby cities quickly arrived at the scene and evacuated surrounding neighborhoods. The explosion and fire ultimately took the lives, took eight lives, destroyed 38 homes and damaged many more. As part of the reconstruction, the city of San Bruno built two parks to replace the Earl Glenby Park that was destroyed. A ribbon cutting for the upper and lower park sites were held on October 27th, 2018, celebrating the strong resiliency of the Crestmore neighborhood. In honor of those that perished in the fire, you're gone but not forgotten. Dedicated September 9th, 2020 by loving community. And so, what's before you tonight is to adopt a resolution authorizing the placement of the monument plaque in remembrance of the 10-year, 10 years that have passed since the 2010 PG&E explosion and fire and appropriate funds in an amount not to exceed $10,500 from the park and loop fund. There was a minor typo in the heading of the report, the body of the report lists the correct amount, which is $10,500. And so with that, open for any questions. I should know that the company that is due to produce this did contact the city today to let us know that unfortunately, due to the fires and individual within, individuals within their workforce that have been affected by the fires, they will not, they are not committing to being able to deliver it in time for the 10-year anniversary, but very much recognize the significance, they're the same company that developed the monument that is in Centennial Park that was paid for by Rotary. And commemorating our centennial. So with that, open for any questions.
Questions from colleagues?
This is Linda.
Councilmember Mason.
Do we have any other commemorations in San Bruno right now? Um, in the entire city? And actually, I should be specific, because I know there are some for the, the Japanese internment and a number of others around the city. But are there any others for this explosion?
Not that I know of, right now. Members of the council may, may have knowledge of that, but I do not know of any monuments in town that commemorate the events.
There's, to the chair, a plaque at the city park where the memorial site is that is for really recognizing many members of the community through a process. But nothing that, there's no other type of acknowledgement like this, or.
Thank you, there is a plaque on the flame memorial that lists the names of the eight individuals that passed.
Memorial sculpture, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Medina.
Yes, um, thank you. What outreach was made to the neighborhood and the families involved? Because I know in the past, we've been, we've been very observant of keeping a, a, a low profile of, of, of the event, and I just wanted to hear what type of feedback we've received from, from the community and those that were most affected by the explosion.
I mean, I can answer a little bit of that. And as we did when it came to the five years going back, there was through neighbors across the street, one had sent out a survey, and that was back even on the five years. And so on the 10 years as well. Unfortunately, people in answering that survey perceived the COVID situation would not be where it is today. So that enough time would have elapsed to where you could actually gather. As, as my colleagues know, and I, the community, by about the fifth, the, basically the neighbors and the residents kind of took ownership, kind of led it. And they would gather, and so subsequent to that, with the COVID situation, some are not feeling that that is the right thing to do to have a large gathering amongst the neighborhood. So with that said, there were some pictures, and I went to the park and would talk to those folks that I've seen as of this afternoon and through the last week or so. And those that would come in to walk through, walk their dog, those that have significance, some neighbors will say, please go speak to that house. So I would be, do as I was directed, and would go and offer the suggestion. In the past, as council members, Vice Mayor Salazar would know, it was very important that it is in the Oakland Fire. There was not something that was so, so prominent that it reminded them each day and wanting to be able to move on and move forward. What has seemed to have changed over the time is that some that take that park with extreme passion and love is that there are five benches, as we know, with family names of those that were killed. And those that have moved in don't know what the relevance is, what the significance is. And so, our city manager had said, you know, we should have it placed further back, kind of out of the way, out of sight. And if you go to where the, the bench is that you can sit and reflect into the canyon, place it there. Almost all of them, except for one, was, no, it should be more prominent. People should know as they walk in. People should be able to see it. If you don't, if you don't walk back there, you won't see it. So that was actually a switch from what I had thought, and maybe the city manager, they wanted it more prominent. So between the survey and between walking in and just talking and being up there, that's, I'm sorry, I answered it way too long, and I apologize, Councilmember Medina.
No, that's absolutely fine. It's, um, it's something that hasn't been brought up in quite a while, at least definitely not to this council, on, on the size of a remembrance or what capacity the city would be involved in. So that, that is good background information. I just want to just understand that we are complying with those most affected. And hearing that attempts have been made, I, I, I'm okay with it. And I'm, I'm ready for the next question for somebody else, and still absorbing that, so thank you very much for that answer.
And I didn't answer your second part of the question, which was those, you know, so there are three lots, as we, we know, Craig's, the Bullis. And obviously, that's on top, and that's where it would go. And then there's down below, of course, as we know, right? And so, have those specific folks been reached out to at this point? No, because we need council direction or action. I have my annual call with Sue Bullis that is occurring in a couple of days, but they specifically have not been asked. I know in Mr. Craig's case, since the tragedy, he's not come back and prefers kind of to keep up, up a distance. Councilmember Davis. You're muted.
You know what, I was unmute, and I muted myself, sorry. So as a park recommission member, we did talk about a, a location that would be really where the original park was. Would be a grove of trees or be some memorial. And one of the things that came up was, you fast forward 10, 20 years, and nobody really understands what occurred. They know there's something special, they've heard about something, but they don't really know. So I really liked the idea of a plaque that really sort of dedicates and explains what sort of happened, because it was something that would never be forgotten by a lot of people in our community. Fast forward to where we are, we had the park, we kind of do this overlook. That came out really nice, too. And so I think it's a, I think it's a nice finishing touch to something that the people in that neighborhood who've grown up, raised their families, continue to live there, will come back and visit. It's a pretty, it's a pretty awesome thing. I've been there over the last year with a few people that live in the neighborhood. It's a very hard thing for me, myself. I was there within minutes of the, minutes of the explosion. I have a lot of families that were affected, people who've lost their homes. My son went to school with the gentleman that was burned. It, so I think that keeping it on sort of a really down low, letting just those members of that community that want to show up as they have been in the past, I think that's a good idea and a good suggestion. COVID makes it even more complicated, so I think it makes sense to do something smaller. So I like the idea, I like the plaque. There was a comment, public comment that somebody made, and I thought, same thing, I felt the same way. And that is, does it really need to say something about the 10-year memorial, or is that really needed? Is, is everything the way it is just enough? So that would be my only comment.
Sorry, and we also do have a member of the public, an important member, who may bring some light to our discussion as well. So if we could please bring in.
Yes, I'm going to bring in James Rui Gomez, just one moment. Hello, Mr. Gomez, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you guys, you guys hear me?
Yes, and whenever you're ready.
Okeydoke. Well, good evening, Mayor Medina, honorable city council members. Hard-working city manager. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My house was at the lower park there, the Ruggames family lived there on that lower park. And I seen this coming up on you guys' agenda as I review you guys' agenda through my work's schedule. And I just think it's very nice and very grateful of you guys to do something like this to memorialize all the folks that have passed, have passed away. Joseph was there with Jessica, you know, and it was, you know, they were first loves, so there's a love story in there as well. You know, something, Joe goes up there all the time and plays basketball in that, that lower park. Maybe in the future, you guys could think of something to do there as well. But I think it's very thoughtful, and I think, you know, keeping it low-key is probably the best way to go. You know, as far as size of the memorial. You know, I think it's fine the way it is, and it's very, just very thoughtful of you guys. As far as any reaching out, you know, I know you guys reach out to the neighbors, the neighborhood up there. And, you know, nobody really reaches out to us. We, I currently live at 1861 Donner Avenue, here right behind the senior center. But at the same time, it's not a, you know, I don't feel like, I don't think I feel that I've been, you know, that the lack of contact is a disrespect to the families, for sure. You know, it does, it does stem all the memories again, but it's worth talking about, and you know, if, if you guys ever want to talk to Joseph, I can get you guys his phone numbers. A lot of you guys have my number through work in politics. I could always get you ahold of Joseph and see what he thinks about this. You know, what, 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 you know, actual victim that came running out of that explosion at the epicenter. Truly amazing that he had survived living so close to that flame, literally running right past it. So I just want to say thank you very much on behalf of my family and hopefully the other families that were involved for, you know, doing something, whether it's ready in the 10-year, at the 10-year anniversary, you know, with COVID, as Mayor Medina stated. You know, it's really probably not that pressing, but it's really nice to see that you guys are doing something. And hopefully, hopefully down at the pool and the memorial, you guys could expand on the, on the memorial that we have down there. I, I walk past it all the time, and just want to thank you guys from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, James. Next person, please.
The next person is Simon Mizola. Just one moment. Hi, Simon, can you hear us?
I can, and I can see you now.
Okay, good. I'm gonna share the screen for the timer, and whenever you're ready.
Thanks, it's more of a question. I, I support the idea of remembering the people that we lost and the event. I was a little unclear on the source of funds, do they come from basically the PG&E settlement money?
We'll get that answer for you, is there any other questions, Simon?
No, that was it, you know. Yeah. I assume it is, if it isn't, I would have a little bit more to say on it, but I assume it is.
So, very, very quick, city manager, real quick, and then Simon, you may have a follow-up, and we'll, I'll allow that since it kind of is, depending on what you may wish to say.
Sure, no, it's currently proposed to come from the city's park and loop fund that has approximately $3.1 million in it. That fund is generated through developments that have paid into the park and loop fund. That fee, council, I know council knows of, has been rescinded and now been replaced with a more comprehensive development impact fee program that will actually raise more money overall for more infrastructure. This was a prior fund that was established for the prior park and loop fee. And so there's $3.1 million in there now that has been donated by various projects. The most recent and largest contribution is approximately $3 million. That was recently paid by the development at 111 San Bruno directly across, across from the Caltrain Station when they were entitled. In regard to the PG&E trust, that has been closed down with the, with all funds expended with the completion of the neighborhood, neighborhood reconstruction project. And the council accepted the closing down of that project a few months ago.
Don't know, Simon, if that answered your question and varied it from your comments. Not seeing his hand back up. Let's go back to. First, thank you for the question, Simon, and then James. Thank you for being on the meeting, and thank you for your comments. And I would share that if folks have not met Joey and, and Jim Wayne, and I remember going and seeing him at the hospital, and it was not good. And so for him to be a survivor, a fighter, and to see him so relatively quick when we were having gatherings up, up there was phenomenal, was a blessing. So, with that said, back to council. Any other questions? Uh, Councilmember Medina, and then Vice Mayor Salazar.
Marty, you're muted.
Did that, too. Thank you. Um, I do support this project. I think the 10-year anniversary at the top of that probably shouldn't be there, because five years from now, 20 years from now, it's just gonna be kind of odd to have that there. So the, the text, I guess it's fine. If tonight we're, if, if tonight we're just going to approve for, to expend the funds, that's great. And if, where, do we know exactly where it's gonna be? I'm sorry if I missed that first part.
Yeah.
That we can maybe move it around still. If we got more input from the community, to have that flexibility.
City manager.
Yes, so the planned placement, there are two locations right now, as the mayor mentioned. One is in front of the crescent bench that overlooks the, the canyon. There's a area, sort of a mound of dirt that rises as you overlook the canyon. There's, that would be one location, we would just need to move some drip irrigation lines. The other concept is to put it towards the front of the park as you walk in. That has not been decided yet exactly which location, and we can certainly take additional input, it's simply just pointing a concrete foundation pad that our, our staff in the public works department will do. And so, we have time to decide on the final location. As far as text, we have time to decide on the final text. A proof is being developed, and then we can make final changes before it is cut.
Thank you. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I also support this project, I think it's an appropriate and definitely necessary remembrance. I agree with the public comment that we got and Councilmember Davis brought up and Councilmember Medina echoed. I think that having the 10 year thing on there could probably be removed and just make this a little bit more of a, sort of a timeless monument that will live on. It's hard to believe it's been 10 years since this happened and just thinking about this and seeing those names, it's, it's still very, it's a very emotional thing. And I remember the comments that we got during the early stages of the planning. And, and there were several people there that did express an interest in not having something that was so in their face reminding them about the, the tragedy. And so I think that this respects that request and having something small and respectful, not immediately in their way is, is definitely an appropriate gesture. I, I, you know, in, in looking at this and just, you know, in the emotions that it evokes to see those names again, which, which I hadn't looked at in some time. And, and then looking at the text, I thought it was, it read a little, it was a little wordy and it read a little bit like, you know, it's, it's very, very detailed and I'm wondering if in this case less may not be more. And if we, you know, maybe take away some, some of the detail, focus on, on the major events. Not take away so much from, from the lives that were lost because I think that really is the, the main thing here. And, and while there was, you know, a lot of, there's so much that could be said about, about the, the impact to everybody else, the impact to the entire neighborhood, the impact to the entire city. The, the response that we got from public safety, not just our own, but also the neighboring cities. And we could write volumes on it, but this, this particular one, I really think should be very focused on, on those that lost their lives and definitely on the impact of the neighborhood. And so if we could rethink that in, in, in the wording, I, I think that would be a little more appropriate. So those are my comments.
Thank you, noted, Marty. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I echo what everybody said about the 10 years. I did want to make sure that the second part of what I think Mr. Missola was alluding to, but I'll just go ahead and ask is, was the Community Foundation approached about this project? Just the idea and the sentiment behind it, I think is great, but I think it's one of the reasons the Community Foundation exists is for something like this would be perfect.
City manager?
So, no, the Community Foundation was not approached about funding this aspect of the remembrance, the Community Foundation was approached about funding another aspect of the remembrance process that we're planning for the 10 year, which is developing a online storyboard with videos, texts, images and newspaper clippings. That will be a, a, a permanent online memorial and history of the events that, that took place. In addition to that, we are planning a, a outdoor kiosk that will be temporarily installed during the month of September because we can't have a large gathering. The, the thought was to have that kiosk, have it installed in the park so families and individuals in the neighborhood could go there quietly reflect. Subsequently, the kiosk will permanently be installed at the new Aquatic and Recreation Center. It's also a kiosk that can be used for other, for other, for other things. It's essentially a 55 inch outdoor rated touchscreen. And so the executive director of the foundation has a, a executive director, a process where they can award grants up to $10,000. And so the foundation was approached for that aspect of the 10 year remembrance process or events, if you will. And then the thought was utilizing and looking at the requirements of our Park and Louvre Fund. This is appropriate, we've confirmed that with the finance director and given the balance in there, we thought pulling 10,500 from that fund was an appropriate recommendation to have the monument developed.
So, so I would just say then, for me, I don't know if there's support, but I definitely agree with Councilmember Davis to take off the 10 years, make it a timeless monument. I was actually thinking today when I was reading the staff report, can you imagine if that happened today with everybody at home with their kids? I mean, it's really scary that, you know, the gas, I think it was the leak that happened over the weekend, it's actually quite terrifying. So I definitely support the idea, but I would ask that if, if the city could speak with the Community Foundation to see if they would be willing to fund the monument, that would be my first choice. And then my second choice obviously would be for us to fund it, but as long as the monument gets completed, it's, it's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, I think we've all had an opportunity to speak and I'll just close it, you know, I don't need to repeat what we've all said and not only that, that again, that's where, for those of us who are on the council, had that disaster occurred at midnight, when everybody was home in bed. We already lost too many, that would have been even more devastating. So with that said, this is a resolution and I think staff's been given some reflections on the tenure, on some verbiage. Councilmember Mason, I see city manager's nodding, so is there any action from council on this item?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion by Davis, seconded by Medina, roll call please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason. Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're going to move on to item number five, study session. A first item will be receive update on planning study for South Linden Avenue and Scott Street Caltrain Great Separation Project. Director Tan.
Mr. Mayor, we will have our city engineer, Haywan Ritchie, provide this presentation. So, Haywan, I think you are ready and the PowerPoint is up.
Okay, great, thank you, city manager. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Haywan Ritchie, I'm the city engineer for the city of San Bruno. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the planning study work that's been performed since we had last met in November 2019 on the South Linden and Scott Street Great Separation Project. The purpose of the study is to evaluate the various options that are available for the great separations at South Linden in South San Francisco and Scott Street in San Bruno. Okay. There is a project development team consisting of the cities of San Bruno and South San Francisco, Caltrain and consultants, AECOM being the lead technical lead. Apex is a public outreach firm and CDM Smith provided traffic support. This update will primarily focus on Scott Street in San Bruno. This is the agenda for the presentation, first I'll go over the objectives of the presentation. Provide background including the future of rail on the peninsula, the project alternatives available, community engagement efforts and feedback that was received, staff recommendation, and then also provide answers to questions. So the objective of tonight are to provide city council with updates on the project study status, provide information on the alternatives. There are various planning efforts along the Caltrain corridor. Of Caltrain adopted the moderate growth scenario examined in their business plan. There are also multiple city-led grade separation projects occurring along the corridor. There's not a priority list per se, but the agencies do compete for the sources of funding depending on their phase and the completion of those phases. And of course, there's also the high speed rail project. Currently, they do have a public comment period, which is for their environmental document, their EIR. So to summarize, high level for the Caltrain business planning effort, what this slide is showing is San Bruno, the existing service levels for the weekday train stops and daily boardings. And as you can see, there is the baseline moderate and high growth and the boxes around the moderate growth. We're seeing about a doubling of weekday train stops and over doubling of daily boardings that is expected. So what does this mean for the number of daily trains on the corridor? Currently, there are about 92 and it is expected with the moderate growth scenario that there may be 398, which is close to 400. Under the high growth scenario, it could have been as high as 478. My understanding is that the planning does not preclude the higher growth scenario, but they have adopted the moderate growth. This slide shows the number of peak trains, or sorry, number of trains expected during the peak hour, which existing is a 10. And under the moderate growth scenario, the future would show 24 trains per peak hour. So what does this mean? Trains will be passing through San Bruno every few minutes. And if you can picture a grade crossing, which I might advance the slides so we could do that. The way that would work is, you know, if you're at a grade separate or at, at grade crossing, when there's a train about to approach, the gates will come down, trains, pedestrians and bicyclists will be alerted and prevented from crossing. And then once the trains have passed, the gates will lift. So with higher amounts of trains that are expected to pass, we could imagine that the gates will be down more. And what this slide is showing is that currently it's about 10 minutes. Under the moderate growth, we're looking at 20 minutes, so a third of the hour. And it could be as high as, you know, on 24 minutes, almost half the time under the high growth scenario. Next slide is the city-led grade separation efforts. There are numerous projects that are currently at various stages of development. And these cities will compete with each other for the limited funding available. This slide shows from approximately the peninsula corridor, but it starts itself in San Francisco, southern side of San Francisco, through the San Mateo corridor. And as you can see, Linden Avenue and Scott Street are the last two at-grade crossings in San Bruno and South San Francisco. This slide shows further down south, you know, Santa Clara and south of Santa Clara. So again, this is an upgrade, I wanted to explain a little bit what that is. That's where the trains and the vehicles are crossing at the same elevation. Under a great separated scenario, we would have tracks and the road at different elevations so that the trains could pass without interfering with the vehicles or pedestrians and bicyclists. So why build a great separation? It's to protect the city of San Bruno, its residents and its neighborhood from the impact of more trains. So there would be, you know, more safety concerns, increased congestion with the gates being down more as well as more train noise. In October 2018, staff did receive direction to conduct a traffic study. And I wanted to just briefly go over those slides again, just to remind my, remind ourselves, you know, how we are, where we are in the decisions that were made. So the, on the left-hand side shows the existing volumes and the level of service. Level of service is from A to F with A being best, F being worst. So that's dark green to red. And on the left is the existing volumes and, you know, they're all fairly in good order. And then on the right-hand side, under the moderate growth scenario where there's more trains, those green dots, I want to just specifically point out dots four and eight. Those become red and those intersections are at Scott and Herman, which is the crossing, as well as Herman and Huntington Avenue. So this show, this slide shows a comparison of the vehicle backups around Scott Street during the AM peak. On the left is current conditions and on the right, under the moderate scenario, you can see that the cars would now begin to back up all the way to Huntington and Herman. Similarly, Linden was also evaluated and current volumes, there's some queuing or backup of cars. And under the moderate scenario, you can see that that backup would actually extend into San Bruno. So where did we leave off at the last meeting? Well, three options were presented that were available to Scott Street and the Great Separation. You know, option C was summarily rejected, eliminated because the city, now, city wanted to protect the residential properties. And this option C would have required property acquisitions. Option A was also eliminated because as could see, as could be seen by the traffic impacts and the safety concerns, doing nothing was also, you know, determined not to be favorable. So that left us with option B, which was to close Scott Street to vehicles, but to allow pedestrians and bicyclists through either an overpass, sorry, over crossing and under crossing to get across the train tracks. So I just wanted to briefly say, you know, option C was rejected. We did not want to have residential properties have to be acquired, so that one was rejected. So the selected plan, it does close the streets to, sorry, close Scott Street to vehicular traffic. They'd be diverted, but overall congestion levels would be better than not doing anything. It eliminates the conflicts between the trains and the other modes of travel. And it would also reduce the need to sound the trains. So there are multiple options, we can go over or under, and then that is in relation to what the tracks would be doing. On the left, we see a over crossing, and I believe this is over a freeway, so it's not quite as high, it wouldn't need to clearance quite as much as at a train crossing. But this is in San Pablo, near Riverside Elementary School. And on the right is Homer Underpass, which is in Palo Alto. I did want to provide you some context with the project location. So here we show the north is to the left, south is to the right. We have a couple boundary conditions, we have Colma Creek to the north and I-380 to the south, as well as the recently grade separated Caltrain station in San Bruno. As you can see, the crossing at South Linden and Scott Street are very close, they're less than 2,000 feet apart. And so what one project does affects the other and vice versa. Scott Street additionally is close to I-380 and we cannot, you know, easily move the structures of the existing, you know, I-380 or the recently grade separated or Colma Creek without, you know, substantial cost and impact. And so these are really considered the boundary conditions. However, due to the proximity, I believe this is, you know, about 1,000 feet from I-380, the amount that the train tracks can get, be raised or lowered is actually fairly narrow at the, it could be narrowed about, sorry, it could be raised about two and a half feet or lowered about six feet. With South Linden's crossing being, you know, a little bit more equidistant between Colma Creek and I-380, the amount that the train tracks can rise or be lowered is actually broader, so I believe it was about plus or minus 15 feet. So in the staff report packet, there should be a summary of alternatives, which is attachment to. You know, the goal of preparing this table was to allow you to have a cheat sheet because there are a lot of various combinations and they just keeping track of them. I think the hope was to reduce some of that confusion hopefully. And what we're showing is, you know, our options really as an over crossing and under crossing, what the train tracks can do, so we have alternatives 1 through 8 across the top. The Scott Street concept, the elevations of the structures at Scott Street, the related concept at Linden, renderings that were available, which I will provide, you know, closely because I know this is very hard to see at this level. And so this is a summary of the presentation provided in one table. So the four alternatives for the train tracks at South Linden, there are four alternatives. Alternative one is to raise the tracks about 15 feet. It's a hybrid option where the tracks would be raised partially and the road would be lowered partially. Alternative two is the opposite, is also hybrid, the trains would be lowered partially and the road would go over partially. And alternative three, the track, three and four, the tracks stay the same. But the road at South Linden either goes fully under, under scenario three, or completely over, under or completely over, under scenario four. If the tracks are to stay at the same elevation in South Linden, they'd be staying at the same elevation in at Scott Street. And that's why in future slides, you'll see that is combined into one because the tracks are essentially doing the same thing. So there are three alternatives, as I mentioned, for the tracks at Scott Street. They could be raised two and a half feet. And those are alternatives one and five. And the difference between one and five is one is an over crossing and five is an under crossing. The tracks would also be lowered by six feet in those alternatives, two and six, over and under, where the tracks would stay at the current elevation, which are alternatives three, four, seven and eight. This really can be treated as one alternative because the tracks really are staying at the same elevation. So in a little bit more detail for the over crossing, we have alternative one, where the tracks are being raised about two and a half feet. Really, it's not substantially different than, you know, what you're seeing for alternatives three and four. And here's an over crossing. Alternative two would lower the tracks and provide the over crossing. And alternative three and four, the tracks stay at the same location and the bicycle pedestrian crossing goes over. Alternative five, we have again, the tracks being raised with an under crossing. Alternative six, the tracks are being lowered and the below grade crossing is deeper. And alternative seven and eight, the tracks are staying at the same elevation and there isn't under crossing. So these are some pictures of examples of pedestrian and bicycle over crossings and under crossing. This is an over crossing at Blossom Hill Road in South, in San Jose. This is the Market Street overpass in San Francisco. It goes over a road. But you can see that there's, you know, various options for the design. You can have switchbacks. You can have very long ramps. You can have, you know, the circular designs. This is some pictures again of Homer Avenue, the under crossing. We have the crossing, the railroad on top and then the under crossing. So alternative one, this provides a view from the profile of how the alternative would appear. So we have the tracks being raised about two and a half feet from existing level. And I wanted to note that there's 27 feet of clearance required from the top of the tracks to the bottom of the crossing structure. Here, the crossing structure is assumed to be about four feet. So what this really means is that if, you know, if we have a five and a half foot tall person approximately and at their eye level, they're about 38 and a half feet high, which I mean, you know, it's pretty close to 40 feet. This is a layout and of alternative one. This is the path of travel that someone could possibly take. The total length being traveled is about a quarter mile. I do want to provide some context of what we're seeing as well. So these green lines are the train tracks going left and right. This brown area is the structure. It could go over, under. In this case, it's going over. These magenta colored areas are the ramps. And here we have the crossing and, you know, some treatments, which, you know, designs still, there's still design opportunities that have not been, you know, flushed out. So these are just high-level schematic at this time. So this is alternative five. Again, the tracks are being raised about two and a half feet. And there's less distance required, less clearance from the bottom of the under crossing structure. It's about 10 feet from the bottom of the tunnel to the over, the under crossing, over crossing of the trains. Would like to note that this is the shortest path of travel at about 0.1 miles, 0.11 miles to get across. And again, we have the structure in brown and the ramps or staircase in magenta. This is alternative two. So we're looking at now the tracks being lowered. So what these slides are showing are sort of the bookends of the tracks being raised two and a half feet or being lowered six feet. And so here we have the tracks being lowered six feet and an over crossing structure, which again, we have the 27 foot clearance, the four foot structure, and then, you know, five and a half feet, an additional five feet at eye level, we're looking at, you know, about 30 feet above ground level. Again, here is a sample layout. This one is a little bit longer at 0.18 miles. Alternative six is to lower the tracks, but again, by the six feet. And this shows the under crossing being lowered even more. So we still have that 10 foot clearance. I should notice, or should note that under alternative five, we were going down about 14 feet to the bottom of the tunnel. Whereas in alternative six, we're about 20, 22 and a half feet. This would result in a longer length of the ramps at about 0.17 miles. So the, we had a community meeting. It was originally scheduled for late March, but due to COVID, it was postponed. After there had been an additional level of comfort with taking public meetings virtual, the community meeting was rescheduled for late June of this year. We had a community meeting on June 22nd. It consisted of a presentation with many of the same slides you're seeing tonight, with a follow-up question and answer session. We also had a separate follow-up question and answer session on June 22nd, two days later. For those who may have missed the first meeting or had follow-up questions, we made the presentation available online to be accessible. We sent about, almost 2,500 mailers, sent mail to those who were on our, sorry, we sent emails to those who are on our contact list, posted on Nextdoor and updated our project website. There were 21 attendees at the first meeting and 18 at the second. There were a couple of speakers. I didn't want to go through the feedback that we received. There were a couple of people who expressed this first bullet, which was, they didn't necessarily, you know, desire an over crossing, but they really did not like the under crossing due to concerns with homeless encampments, reduced visibility of pedestrians and bicyclists using the under crossing and stormwater flooding issues. There had been expressed a desire to keep this road at grade, but it was explained that, you know, that decision had been made already. And, you know, the do nothing option was, you know, would lead to an tenable situation with the traffic and safety. One person, I'm not sure who had asked, you know, do we need a pedestrian bicycle crossing at all? Another noted that, you know, the terminus of the the crossing should be moved closer to an intersection or moved completely to Tan Fran. Some of the movement of the intersection that, those are design details that we could still evaluate. We did not evaluate moving the crossing all the way to Tan Fran. It is in closer proximity to Linden. And there was a desire to keep the crossing at Scott Street. One resident requested confirmation that we were not, you know, acquiring residential properties. And that was confirmed that we are not. And the same individual desired sound walls along with a pedestrian over crossing. I would like to say that the Zoom platform, it is a little bit challenging to know, you know, how many people, you don't get that feedback necessarily of knowing whether individuals' concerns are broadly shared. The engagement is a bit more complicated than doing it in person because, you know, sometimes they have their screen off. It's just hard to get that same level of engagement. But these are the feedback that we received. So the decisions that do need to be made are with respect to the railroad tracks. There really are only three alternatives for the tracks at Scott Street. That's to raise it two and a half feet, lowering it six feet or keep it at the current grade. And then with those various train options, alternatives, whether we want to have an over crossing or an under crossing. So I did want to start just filling down the options because there are, you know, quite a few. So the tracks being raised two and a half feet is actually not that different than the tracks being at grade at Scott Street. You know, the difference of at grade versus two and a half feet. There are, I do want to say, significant impacts in South San Francisco with the four, you know, with their four alternatives for the tracks. And the first alternative has the least amount of property impacts. And increasing with each alternative, with alternative four, three and four having the most property impacts. And so, you know, there was a desire to, you know, keep that in mind. So if we were to say that two and a half feet and at grade are, you know, very similar, that really effectively reduces it down to two options for the tracks, which is to raise it two and a half feet or lower it by six feet. And the relevant alternatives associated with that are alternatives one, which is an over crossing with the tracks raised. Alternative five, which is an under crossing with the tracks raised. And then alternative two is an over crossing with the tracks lowered six feet. And alternative six is an under crossing with the tracks lowered six feet. In terms of project costs, the alternatives one and five are expected to have the least least total costs. I did receive a little bit more updated information on alternatives two, three, six, seven, four and eight. These are expected to have higher costs, but there's a range. And so here I do, it has 48 have the highest cost, but there may be some overlap. So in generally, in general, two, three, six, seven, four and eight, all are higher costs than one and five. Next, I would like to show you conceptual renderings. Unfortunately, these were not available for the community meeting. Unfortunately, we did not have them, but I did want to present them tonight because we were able to get them created between the community meeting and now, because they do provide a visual, a powerful visual for, you know, what it could potentially look like. So there are three various views. On Herman, looking north at Scott Street. On Herman, looking east directly at the tracks halfway between Scott and Bay Shore. And then on Herman, looking south towards Bay Shore Circle. So I will, I'm sure that, so this is the current condition. We are on Herman, looking north. This is South San Francisco, San Bruno, New Orleans. And here we have the under crossing option. This is with the tracks being raised two and a half feet. The tracks are slightly elevated already because they're on, you know, a road, a track bed. And then they'd be raised two and a half feet. But as you can see, the, this is what an under crossing option would look like at that intersection. So Scott is closed to traffic or vehicle traffic. Here is the over crossing alternative. As you can see, this is an approximate height of about, it was about 33 and a half feet or so. And this is a single story home. These are double story, but as you can see, it is quite tall. This is the current condition. This is halfway, approximately halfway between Bay Shore Circle and Scott Street, looking directly east at the tracks. These are, you know, eucalyptus trees that we can use as a point of reference. This is the under crossing option. And this is the over crossing option with the height. Again, the design details can, could be worked out, but this is to provide, you know, some scale as to how tall the structure might be. And again, current conditions or this is near, this is Bay Shore Circle. This is looking south. This is what an under crossing view might look like. So you do see the ramp starting to go down with the landing approximately at Bay Shore Circle. And under the over crossing scenario, it is, this is very conceptual, but it does show, you know, relative heights as well as, you know, the maximum ramp slopes that we, you know, by ADA are allowed to have. And so some of the design considerations I did want to provide because you may be surprised to see how tall the over crossing is. Over freeway, the clearance needed is about 18 and a half feet, whereas over tracks, it's 27 feet. And then under ADA, the maximum slope we can have is 8.33%. And then every 30 feet, we need a five foot flat landing. And so that does extend the length of the ramps. So these are, this is a slide of the advantages and disadvantages of pedestrian crossing. Advantages of an over crossing is easier construct than an under crossing, less destructive of the railroad operations during construction, potentially less costly if we don't need to relocate utilities. If we need to relocate utilities, then, you know, the cost will go up. Disadvantages, it's more difficult to cross because the ramps are longer. And as you saw with the conceptual renderings, the visual impact is greater overall. Some of the advantage of the under crossing is easier for pedestrians to cross because the lengths of the ramps are shorter and there's lower visual impact. Some of the disadvantages are, they're more difficult to construct because often it's, you know, unavoidable to have utility relocations, greater impact to railroad operations during construction, potentially more costly. So I did want to give a quick overview of the next steps, but I will, my next slide will be the question slide. So the next steps will be for council to provide at a regular meeting on August 25th, the preferred alternative for the tracks and the crossing treatment of Scott Street. Prepare conceptual designs, cost estimates and renderings of the preferred alternative. Complete the project study report and then to seek funding for the next phase of the project. So with that, I'd like, I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
And before we go to questions by council, I'd like to ask any members of the community that do wish to provide any input or ask questions, if you would raise your virtual hand now. Council members, if after we go to public, I'm going to ask each of you, we'll go around the room or per se, and just take one at a time and make sure you get all those questions out. City manager?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. First off, Heyuan, thank you for that presentation. We went through so many versions of it. But the graphics at the end came out amazingly well to convey. And you did a great job conveying some very complicated options to the council and the public. Members of the city council and the mayor, I just want to say that at your next meeting on August 25th, August 25th, you do really have a very important decision to set the trajectory of what this project will be. And as Heyuan described, we are essentially in a race toward having a fully designed project and essentially a shovel-ready project upon which that we can compete for funding and to protect this community in the long run and have a great separated crossing. We really need to step toward making these critical decisions and then moving forward with the conceptual design process. And we've been working in lockstep with the city of South San Francisco because of their South London, South London crossing. The next phase of this project is schematic design. That is approximately a $4 million phase. We will seek funds through the regional transportation agencies for that funding in partnership with South San Francisco. And so South San Francisco is actually scheduled to make their decision after hours at the tail end of August. And then we will jointly proceed forward to request funding on behalf of the citizens of San Bruno and the citizens of South San Francisco. So again, we can proceed to having a fully designed project to have a great separated crossing when those funds become available. And what was really nice about the graphic that Heyuan demonstrated is with South Linden and Scott Street, there's a really nice stretch between San Francisco and Millbrae that is fully great separated. And we know, looking at further south, there are a lot of at-grade crossings south of Millbrae. And they are working just as fast as we are to compete for funds. We're in a position right now where we're actually a little bit ahead of most. And so if we can continue with this pace, we have the ability to really be at the front of the line for funding of these great separations. And so with that, staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. First, we'll see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on this topic. At this time, I'm not seeing any and Melissa can correct me, but oh, I do, yes. But you, I know this is Drew. And so Melissa, if you can let Drew in.
Drew, I'm trying to get you unmuted. Can you hear us?
Yes, I think I'm unmuted successfully now.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
So yeah, I, I have eaten lunch, spent a lot of time in San Bruno, I don't, in San Bruno, sorry. And I don't currently live there, but I've been following this project. And I was waiting until any residents spoke first. That's why I waited to raise my hand. So a few things, I really appreciate the renderings and taking some feedback to like the, the crossing not being in front of someone's house, going across that street, Herman Street for the ramp side. I just think that's fundamentally such a much better setup and the renderings show it. I do agree. I do agree the over crossing, wow, that's a long bridge, a long ramp and some stuff. So, but just that direction of not having it. Having a str- the crossing right in front of someone's house like the, the previous diagrams, all those diagrams we're showing. I think that's a great improvement. Thank you so much. I appreciated the summary sheet, just trying to break it down because yes, there's quite the matrix of, of options and different scenarios. And then the, the one thing, uh, I would say for an over crossing, I mean, you can go through pros and cons for each scenario, but. If an over crossing happens would just be, uh, try to make it ionic or really special. I, it's not. There are things that could be done to, that don't cost a lot of money that just, I mean, so that's like, i- instead of just being quote, an eyesore, it. Would be a description. It's like, well, but we, we really made it special and brainstorm how that can be. I mean, at. At night lighting and stuff with LED lighting and some stuff, but you don't want to shine the lights in the residence homes, but you know, I don't know what that is, but it's just. Make it special. Um, if you choose the over crossing um, option. I mean, there's pros and cons each one. And the under crossing, the ramp just seems so much shorter and stuff. So, but thank you for letting me speak at your meeting.
Uh, you're very welcome and thank you for your participation. And I know you've been in all the meetings. So, uh, thank you. I, I'm not seeing any other members of the public at this time. So with that, we'll close uh, comments from the public. We'll bring it back to. The city council and I, I'd like to start with one and just go hit on each of us if I can, so we can get all of our questions out. So is there anybody prepared to go first? Um, Marty, uh, council member Medina, sorry.
No problem. Um. Thank you for the presentation. What are the ballpark cost estimates for these different options? I, I don't know if we're talking about tens of millions of dollars or hundreds of millions of dollars. So that would really help. Um, me with making this decision. Um, so Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you want me to continue with all of my questions at this time?
Sure, that'd be a good idea. Thank you.
Okay. Um, currently there are two existing under pedestrian under crossings, one by the Caltrain parking lot. At Euclid and the other one near Lyons Field, um, there on Huntington. How different would this new under crossing be compared to those existing under crossings? I think that would help the public and myself understand um, the, the scale of it. Um, I have used those under crossings uh, at different times and. After hearing about the concerns from the public about having the under crossing, do we have any data? From um, the police about any problems at these under crossings? I've never seen a homeless encampment at the under crossings. The other question that I have is um, as for the funding, in the event that we do not get funding. Does that pretty much mean that this project is dead? Cause there's no way that San Bruno could come up with four million dollars to pay for something like this. So. I just wanted to understand that we are totally, totally reliant on getting grants to do this work and that. Um, no additional funds would come out um, from the city. And those are my questions.
Thank you. And I think just for, for staff, why don't we take the council members' uh, comments, I'm sorry, questions first and just so we don't inundate staff. So. Uh, I, I will say, hey, you want, you look like you're ready to go, but I don't want to assume.
Uh, yes, I can try to. I, I may rely on some of our consultants to help with the cost question. Um, I, I want to say it's more on the latter end of the range we had given, um, not the tens of millions, probably closer to the hundreds of millions. But if we could potentially let um, Millet Lipzinger, um, she's from ACOM, um, help answer that question. In terms of scale, what?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me? This is um, Millet Lipzinger from ACOM.
We can hear you.
Oh, um, yes. Um, yes, we're definitely in the hundreds of millions of dollars. We have not um, done detailed estimates of the. Each of these alternatives, but we will be doing that um, once we kind of decide on which alternatives that we are carrying forward. Um, so, you know, just to give you a, a point of reference, we did do um, somewhat a year or two back. Some estimates for an underpass at the Broadway. Uh, grade separation that would be in Burlingame and that was in around the three hundred and thirty million dollar range. Um, I can tell you of the four variations of the grade separation that we're looking at. Um, alternative one, which is the hybrid where you're partially um, lowering the roadway and partially raising. The tracks is, would be the lowest cost of the four that we're looking at. And then we do have some ranges, I think. Probably um, the other three, three alternatives would increase in costs anywhere between. Um, you know, one point two, all the way up to two times what um, alternative one would be.
Thank you, Mo.
Mr. Mayor, just a little more clarity because there's so many alternatives. So.
Yes.
Of, of the two that were on that first slide that were more likely of. I guess, I just want to have a better understanding of which alternatives, because there's like seven, right? So the cheapest one is one. And then number five is, is the alternative where there's an under crossing. Is that the one that's like one point two, one point two times?
Um, no, it's not. So um, from my, I'm speaking from the standpoint of one, one and five from the railroad perspective. In the, in the, is the same profile, right? So it's still what I'm calling the hybrid. So where the. Railroad track is partially raised and the roadway is partially lowered. So that's the same alignment. The only difference between one and five is what happens at Scott Street. Whether you're going over or under is how I'm understanding how you guys parsed this out into the eight alternatives that you're looking at. So I would say in both cases, one and five are similar costs. And I didn't, when I, I guess I should clarify too, I made those statements as they relate to um. Looking at just the grade separation alignment and those four alternatives comparatively. We didn't do a comparison of over and under through that. I mean, some of those costs would be um, similar. So I don't think it's a big differentiator, but.
Okay. Perhaps maybe in the future, on that um, chart or that um, spreadsheet, there could be a cost that would just. Help out a little bit to understand what we're actually getting into. And I guess for me, it would be how much more expensive would be. Uh, comparing what's, when you go under or when you go above for each of those different scenarios.
Yeah, and I think um, it, it's, it's, we're definitely splitting hairs here a little bit. I mean, and I don't think they're going to be hugely different. The over and under. I mean, over, obviously the over is longer, right? You have more structure and longer ramps and things like that. So. Um, I would tend to say that the over would be more expensive, but again, you know, even though the under crossing is shorter, the tunnels. Um, still is going underground. We have a lot more utility relocation. So it's really hard to say that one is less or more than the other until you actually. Cost out the specifics that you have at this location, which we have not done yet at this point, but it.
Their relative costs were based on the railroad alignment primarily.
Correct, correct. Thank you.
Um, should I move on to the next question?
Yes, please.
The Euclid and Sylvan under crossings, um, how are they different? How would this new costing be different from those? Um, at closer to uh, the San Bruno um, crossing, the rate, the. Train tracks or the railroad tracks are higher than they would be at Scott Street. So at Scott Street, they'd be at the current elevation. But raised about two and a half feet, whereas at Euclid and Sylvan, um, I don't have the exact elevation, but. You know, they look like they could be about fifteen, you know, ten, fifteen plus um, feet above the ground surface, which means that you can actually um, see. From the ground level, um, from the street level to crossings, whereas um, at Scott Street. Um, although, you know, the train bed is raised, um. The, the bottom of the under crossing would be lower.
If I just asked a little clarifying on that, Mr. Mayor, but, but the scale of, of the, the length would be relatively the same and, and it would just be a little deeper. As you explained.
Correct, and a little bit longer just to make up the grade because, you know, for every foot you go, you need a little bit longer to get across, but. Um, certainly going down is shorter than you went over because the, the, the differences are much different.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very, thank you very much.
And I would just like to add one comment to that too. Um, I think likely at um, Scott Street, you're also going to have a longer under crossing. Because there are plans to possibly extend to four tracks within the Caltrain right of way. So that means. Right now, I think those other under crossings you have are just under two tracks. So. That would be a definitely something that would be different about this location.
Another question, uh, the councilor Medina had was in regards to data or problems of homeless or other activities that may have been noted. Since the train station has, um, you know, had their underpassings.
Right. Um, I am not aware of a lot of issues with homelessness. Um, I believe. Supervisor over at the corporate had noted that there were some issues with homelessness, but um, I would say that that was anecdotal. Um, I, I did not receive any police data on that problem though, if there was a problem.
And I think one other thing, and maybe I'm uh, putting a question into, into the council members, but on the funding source, I think he was also alluded to, it's like. From where? Funding sources, how much of the city? From what other sources uh, are the potential for us to help pay, pay for the project?
Correct. I think we would have to, of course, um, try to find different sources of funding. It'd be, I think, very challenging to move forward without. Finding other sources of funding, whether they be state or federal. Um, well, I don't know if you know of specific grant opportunities um, available. I believe the TA may still have some measure A funding available, but it is relying on us um, completing the phase. So unfortunately, it does not sound like we can, you know, try to get the funding prior to the completion.
Yeah, I mean, I can add a couple of points to that, which maybe some of you are familiar with, and I'm certainly not an expert on this at all, but you know, there are. Some initiatives that are being considered right now, which like, um, well, or was the, the whole faster um, measure that you may have heard about. It was a multi-county tax that they believe are going to do to raise funds for transportation, that likely you would see some, uh, some contribution of that related to. Um, Caltrain corridor and improvements along there. I think there's also been discussions recently. Caltrain is getting ready to, and I don't know if Melissa Rajardia from Caltrain is on this call or not, but um, there was a regional transportation. Initiative that they're looking at to fund a grade separation program for the corridor, right? They're just starting to study what that may look like and how they. Um, may fund that. I mean, they're just starting to scout that work, but that's also something that they're looking at as a source to generate funds for. Cause you're, all the cities along the peninsula are in similar situations where they're, as high speed rail advances and more trains and electrification comes. Um, there's going to be more um, urgency to grades separate the corridor.
Melissa, did you want to add anything? I saw you.
Yes, this is Melissa from Caltrain. I just wanted to say that I completely agree with everything Millet just said. Um, I just wanted to add a little bit of detail and that's that, you know, Caltrain is in this space where we recognize funding is sort of a corridor wide issue. Um, amongst many sort of more specific technical issues that exist for many grade separation projects up and down the corridor. So we're, we hope to kick off a corridor wide grade separation study at the end of this calendar year. Which would be quite a comprehensive effort that would look at a very, very wide variety of issues, technical and also funding. Um, and so we'd be looking to your city as well as others to sort of be stakeholders within that process to sort of help us think through. How to fund what is essentially sort of a huge mega project. If you look at it all together and all comprehensively. Um, that, that we just need to think through at the regional level. So just wanted to add a little flavor to that where we know it's a problem. We want to. Um, go through a process with the cities to start addressing it.
To, city manager, did you have something to follow up?
No, uh, Melissa uh, answered it well. I, I do want to say that we will be uh, with South San Francisco applying to the Samatail. Uh, Transportation District uh, for funding of, of the next phase. Uh, but, but there, um, as everyone said, various state and federal funds. Uh, that uh, fund these projects. Um, sometimes they're funded without any, any local dollars. Sometimes there are local dollars and. As you know, anytime you're doing improvements, uh, a, a city may say, oh, well, I would love if this was added to the project or if that was added to the project. Or if we're going to do this, maybe there's some approved improvement. And so there, there may be some local dollars um, in the project. Uh, but largely paid for uh, by state and federal funds, uh, and maybe even uh, some um, regional uh, or, or county wide measure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council member Davis.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Medina. So Marty, I had the same question you did about um, what that would look like if we wanted to do some type of under crossing. But I know the examples we have in San Bruno are all um, at street level and so they actually really look kind of wide and open and I don't see any concerns for safety issues down there. So I guess the question is, is there anywhere in, in, in the Bay Area that we can use some examples of what we would be looking at? It's, you know, it's one thing to kind of see some conceptual designs and by the way, those images are great. But what would that under crossing look like? And for the distance that we're talking about, if there's anywhere that we can drive to, look at on Google, et cetera, that'd be great. So that'd be my first question. Um, and then from a safety perspective, also with that, I mean. You know, a lot of bird poop, a lot of bird droppings on, under the San Bruno Avenue. We get a lot of complaints about that. And I think the under crossing leads to urination and, and, and different things like that. That I'm kind of concerned about. Um, who maintains that under crossing? So that would be another question. And then, do we know what South City's doing with Linden? Is there any discussion on what they're going to be finalizing? Because I guess it makes a big difference for us. Um, and yeah, I mean, I think the cost is another big deal. And I guess my final comment would be is it's unfortunate we have, don't have very many comments on here tonight, especially that we have these renderings. So I, I really want to hear about, you know, the comments from the residents in the neighborhood, you know, some of those um, over. Walkways over above are big and large and no matter kind of how you slice it, it's still pretty tall. And when you're looking at the same height of a, a home that's sitting there. It's a pretty big piece. And I guess my, my other question is, can you clarify again, it was a quarter mile for an elevated walkway. What was the distance on the under crossing if we go under? Is point one one, was that what the number was? Like part, less than quarter of a mile?
Yes, uh, it was point one one for the um, hybrid option where the railroad tracks are raised and um, the, it's an under crossing. So, and that's correct, I believe it was just over a quarter mile for the over crossing, the same um, roadway elevation. Um, so in terms of an under crossing that's similar in the Bay Area, um, I believe the, the picture that was shown for Homer. Is a similar scenario where um, the tracks are more at grade elevation and. But like you definitely know about more of the under crossings than I do, so please let me know if I'm speaking, but I believe that is a similar.
Good.
Under type, under crossing.
Yeah, that's what Peter and I would, I would identify too, is probably a very similar example.
Perfect.
On the quarter.
Um, in terms of who maintains um, the crossing, that uh, we would have to enter into a maintenance agreement with, with Caltrain. Um, the JP B and um, those details would need to be worked out. Um, right now, I think that those. Right now, I think that those, um, agreement negotiations haven't begun.
Okay.
Do we know what South San Francisco will be doing? Um, I don't want to speak for them, definitely. Um, I think their presentation, I most recently heard that it has been pushed back until their first meeting in September. But, you know, if I had to take a guess, I would say that probably the option with the least property impacts, least cost, in a way, it seems they, it seems to point to, um, more of a direction, um, or an easier selection. Um, not to say that they're, you know, I don't want to speak for them as well, but, um, if I had to, um, take a guess, that, that would be my opinion. And then not many comments from the residents. Um, yes, I, I do wish there were more residents available. I think it's always, you know, I think especially with Zoom, um, having that personal connection and being able to read their expressions to see, yes, I'm getting a broad, you know, concurrence with this, what this one speaker is saying, and so we kind of missed a little bit of that. You know, we did let the residents of the community know that in, in August, we would be going to council. Uh, when we emailed the, uh, those on our email list. And, uh, you know, the information is available on our city website. Um, so I do see some residents, but you know, I think it's a challenge, definitely. Um, I believe I answered.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think for the, a lot of residents, and I actually have a family, I mean, a friend, I went to high school with her, family still lives there, and they're just so pleased that we didn't, um, emin domain or lose their properties. I mean, there's a lot of residents who've been living there for many, many years, fixing comes, and they're, they would be devastated. So I think once they kind of relieve of that, they're like, go ahead and do what you want to do. But, um, getting the renderings is really kind of nice. So is there, um, you know, between now and in the 25th, is there a next meeting to, to approve this? Is there any way to reach out to anybody who was pretty vocal or may have contacted the city? And we have, they've signed, they signed up, they went to the meeting, the community meeting, just to let them know that there's a decision being made, that we can hopefully hear from them again. So thank you so much.
We can, I will try to email out the list again and use Nextdoor to the extent possible. And if we have phone numbers, um, we did not have too many phone numbers, we had more emails. We can certainly email them again.
That'd be great.
Vice Mayor or Councilmember Mason, which is prepared to go? Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, um, so, um, then what's the noticing requirement for the next meeting when there's an action item? When it's an actual action item?
Can you get maybe all your questions, and then we'll have staff for the outside folks?
Okay. And I think that most of my questions have actually been answered. The other question I had is, which option is going to be the, is going to have the least amount of noise? Is there going to be any option that actually lessens the noise on the community? Will it be more? Will it be less? But I'm really curious to know that. And then, um, I was at a meeting, I think it was last, late last year, um, the one that was had at the American Legion. And I know that there were a number of different displays up. And so my question is, um, I can't, what I can't remember is whether that was one of the meetings where residents were asked to put dots or to verify, you know, which one was their favorite. And something that I'd really like to start seeing is the results of those. So if there were 25 residents at that event, how many of those 25, uh, wanted Alternative One? How many wanted Alternative Two and Alternative Three? Cause I've been to a couple like that, and I haven't, I've seen majority, but I haven't seen actual numbers. So, um, that would be good to know. But, um, I think, I, I think that's it, and I have just a comment. I guess I just have some concerns around if we're going to get into a maintenance agreement with Caltrain, that we have a number of other issues with Caltrain right now. Assuming that, uh, the properties that we have, um, in various parts of, of San Bruno are not maintained. They've got garbage everywhere. Um, and that's really a great concern of mine, is entering into a new agreement for hopes of something better, when my understanding is we have an existing agreement for some of the spaces, and they look like dumps. And so, um, if we're talking about an underground space or an overground space, um, how, how, what is going to be the reassurance that this is going to be better maintained than what we have right now? Thank you.
Thank you. Who's prepared to answer some of those questions, please?
Yes, um, so in terms of noticing requirements, um, this is a regular council meeting, and so, um, it would be, you know, typical noticing of the agenda prior to the meeting. There aren't any project-level noticing requirements per se, if this were, you know, I guess what comes to mind is a zoning or planning type, um, application. Um, so this is, this is a citywide project. So, which options would lead to less noise? Well, I think with a grade separation, there can be an expectation that there will be less noise resulting from the train. And I just learned today that I guess it's a long, long, short, long, that's what they call it, um, when, you know, at a grade. Um, and so, you know, certainly that amount of noise would be reduced, um, for the, and, but I think what you mean is just the train noise in general. You know, my understanding is that if the train is lowered, it could have, um, you know, I'm definitely not a noise expert, and so maybe Melissa could, um, you know, contribute to this conversation as well. But, you know, my understanding is that if it's below grade, it can be quieter.
Yeah, I can, I can contribute, I can offer some experience, just, um, this is Molette, and Melissa can certainly jump in, too. But, um, we actually, AECOM was involved in completing a study for, as you may know, the city of Palo Alto is studying many options within their city of what they want to do, from hybrids, like we've talked about here tonight, to viaducts, to trenches. And, um, we did do a, uh, noise study for that corridor to evaluate those, those types of alternatives. What we're finding overwhelmingly is that, you know, the biggest significant reduction is noise is related to the elimination of the, um, train horns that going through. Once you grade separate and they don't have to honk their horns, then that's the, that's a huge reduction in noise. And then generally, as we dove more into whether you elevate or lower the track, there's, um, with the elevation, there's many things that we can do to mitigate the noise, including parapet walls on the retained fills and things. And in the future, with, um, Caltrain, the way I'm understanding it, introducing, um, their new locomotives, their electric cars, their electric trains, um, the, the main source of noise or the engines or, uh, for those are actually at the bottom of the train and not at the top, like it, more like a diesel engine. You hear the noise from the top of the locomotive, whereas the train, um, their motors are in the bottom part of the train, and they're actually also distributed, um, throughout a few cars of the train. So it's not just one source of location. So, um, that our noise study basically concluded, there are some small variations between those extent of alternatives, but they're not significantly like, oh, yes, the trench is much quieter than a viaduct or anything like that. They were very close in, um, at least what you can detect from your ear perspective. Thank you.
Um, yes, so the, uh, American Legion community meeting, that was community number, community meeting number two. We did focus that meeting on the three options that were evaluated for the crossing at Scott, whether we keep it as is, we close to traffic, or we provide a full grade separation. And I can, um, you know, put some of those, I took pictures of the boards, I can make that available on the project website to view. That one was really limited towards, yeah, I think the alternatives, the various alternatives, uh, boards were shown, but I think the emphasis was on, you know, the fate of Scott Street and leading up to the, um, the, sorry, the council meeting decision, um, in November. So that meeting was in August, I don't, about a year ago. And then a couple of months later, we followed up with the council meeting. And, um, in terms of a maintenance agreement, um, you know, I think, I'm not sure that I can necessarily speak to this directly, but I think the hope would be that we, um, you know, provide the maintenance that is needed and that that gets negotiated with Caltrain. Most, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, so this is Melissa again. Um, so my understanding is that the terms of various maintenance and operating agreements, of course, are negotiated per project, so they can vary up and down the corridor, um, in terms of who does what. Um, so I think it's largely TBD on specific maintenance responsibilities for this particular project. Um, but in terms of other maintenance and operating agreements that you have with Caltrain, I'm absolutely happy to follow up on those, if there's any sort of dissatisfaction on your end, I'm happy to facilitate that.
That, that would be wonderful, as early as tomorrow, please.
I'll follow up with Hey Wan.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. And then I think that only other thing I would say then is the noticing, just I would request if we could use our new social media platforms, that would be great for the, the next meeting. But thank you.
With the photos?
With the photos, yes.
Base bar is not working. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So, um, a lot of good information, and, uh, I, I was a little surprised to see the number of options expanding again, because it seemed like we were starting to contract, and now we have more options. But I, but I understand all the different things that are being considered. I, I think a lot of the questions I had have already been addressed. I'm, um, you know, looking at the, at the, at the page here with all of the options. I, I think I would tend to agree with the staff recommended alternative, primarily because it does, um, it lessens the impact on the neighborhood, both in having, uh, a, a shorter path for people to maneuver and just the overall impact, the visual impact to the area. So I, I think it does make sense. It definitely helped to get some information on relative costs. I think this is the first time we've actually talked about what any of the options might cost. Uh, so that's definitely helpful in discussing it, and it seems that all the undergrounding options are more expensive. But in terms of getting something that's, um, a, a benefit to the city, it does seem to be the option, well, the best option for us, but, uh, given all of the, uh, the other things that we're hearing about, you know, some of the, the downside, uh, and, and I, I'm thinking probably the stormwater issue is probably one of the bigger ones. I know we've had issues on, on San Bruno Avenue with stormwater. And, um, maybe, uh, by the time, uh, we, we start getting closer to a decision, uh, we might have some information on what can be done to mitigate that, whether we have, uh, redundant pumps or, you know, um, something that could, uh, help alleviate or prevent those issues. And, and definitely with the maintenance. I, you know, I heard the, um, the four-track option mentioned, which I, I don't think we had discussed that before, but, uh, definitely, and, and planning for, for high-speed rail and having the broader tracks. I, I think that, um, that also should definitely be factored in here. And I, I think having the, the tracks, um, oh, well, having more flexibility in, in how that layout, um, is, is going to look in that particular area. Um, I, I hadn't heard anything specific about where the four tracks might be, or whether passing lanes might be included, and, um, how that would look for San Bruno. I, I think the stuff that's already been elevated is probably going to remain two tracks. And, uh, because this is still at grade, it's a potential for having four tracks. So, uh, that's definitely a consideration, that's going to make that tunnel a lot longer. And with it already being submerged, I think it does tend to make it look a little more, I don't know, uninviting, uh, to, to a pedestrian. The other, the other ones are definitely, uh, you know, they're wide, they're open, they're lit. And so it, it does look a little more inviting, if, if we're having a longer stretch that's more submerged. Um, I, I definitely want to see some, um, ideas on how we mitigate that. Do we provide, you know, more lighting? Do we make it extra wide? And, uh, is that, is that still, um, are, are those options still, um, you know, plausible, given that, um, you know, that we're going to have, um, those trains right above it? So I know we, they're, they're not light, and so we do need to accommodate that, that extra weight over a bigger span. So it becomes an engineering concern. Yeah, I had, you know, the same concerns about, you know, maintenance. And, and of course, you know, the impact of whatever South San Francisco's decision is. And, um, you know, if, if their staff is going to be recommending that they go with, uh, option five as well, I, I think that, that could work out for all of us, and we can make a case for the funding. So, um, those, those are my comments.
Yes.
I've noted your comments, and they certainly, those are good, um, design items to consider, and as well as the maintenance.
Could I just add one clarification? And I, Melissa wants to jump in on the four-track. I mean, the, what, um, my interpretation of the approval of the moderate growth of the business plan, did, was approved. The high growth wasn't, when they moved to high growth, it, it triggers the high growth. So when the board, JPB approved the moderate growth plan, they also kind of put that clause in there not to preclude four tracks in the future where possible. So I do think, you know, although it's, you're not seeing that, fully documented or laid out, but the, the, the vision is that's the future for the corridor. So in places where they are considering improvements, particularly at this preliminary level, it, they're, you're, they're encouraging, if it's, if it makes sense, um, to think of that for the future, then we're encouraged to do so.
Right. And I remember the conversations from LPMG where there was really a, a desire to, um, adopt the, the medium growth, but also plan and accommodate for, for the high-growth version of it. And, and I think it was brought up also that high-speed rail wasn't being accounted for, and that's, that's kind of a, a whole, it's a whole other subject, different from, from these projections. But there could be, um, high-speed trains coming through here that need to be accommodated and separated from normal local traffic.
Hey, this is Melissa. Do you mind if I just, um, sort of add a little bit of detail to that? So I just want to clarify that high-speed rail operations are in fact included in that Caltrain moderate service growth scenario. There was a, you know, basically the, the business plan embarked on a very comprehensive effort of blended system planning. In terms of the four-track, Molette was absolutely right. We just don't want to preclude the ability to do four tracks at some point in the future. So if you ask yourself, what does that really mean? It's, we don't want to make it a lot more complicated or a lot more expensive to build it out in the future. But that doesn't necessarily mean we're actively planning for those four tracks. And certainly there's a lot more analysis that would need to be done about where that would even go within the San Bruno, South San Francisco area. And the way we think about that four tracks is, it would be something that would be prompted in, in tandem with other big regional projects, like a second bay, like a second transbay tube, for instance. So it's really quite far into the future. So I hope that helps sort of clarify where it is in the, in the realm of our planning process.
Yeah, yeah, it, it does help. And, and I know that when we, when we were still talking about our first grade separation, the four-track option was something that was thrown out and then taken out. And we ended up with a, with a two-track option there. It does seem to me, though, in just in looking at these diagrams, where some of these, you know, they look, uh, they look pretty cramped for, for two tracks. And so if, you know, we, we do want to leave options there for four tracks, and I, I think it would be very prudent to do that. You know, I, it's, it's gonna, we, we have to take that into, into consideration for this design, because we don't want to put the stair so close to the tracks that now there's no room for two more tracks. And so I, I, you know, I think we, we definitely have to consider that and what impact that has on, on the choices that we make on, on this particular project. So, um, definitely want to make sure that that's, um, that that's considered. And, uh, also, and then looking at the renderings, uh, you know, they, um, there does seem to be quite a bit of aesthetic improvement to the area, and I'm wondering if, um, the proposed project would include those improvements. The, the landscaping and the, um, the little walls that are grown in there. Is that something that we're going to be proposing as part of this project, or is that just there for eye candy?
I mean, I would probably add, we do take some artistic license when we do do these renderings, but like I think Hey Wan mentioned, these are just, you know, schematics at this point. There can be all sorts of landscaping included or not, or different wall treatments, you know, that's all would be part of like the next phase of the project when you started getting into more detailed design. We've provided, you know, some potential possibilities, but, and we do try to add landscaping, but not overcommit, because you do want to have what you show be close to what it looks like in the end at some point. But definitely, those would be discussions as you advanced in design that you would find to, you know, we're at planning level, and we're just trying to outline, you know, what your rough cost in the general parameters of the infrastructure cost would be for the project.
Yeah. Well, I don't think there's any harm in having those conversations earlier, or at least throwing the idea out there, because I know when we got to the end of the last-grade separation project, there were a lot of open questions about who's responsible for what, and who's going to pay for the trees and the landscaping and all that stuff. So want to make sure we're considering it upfront. Thank you.
Okay, just for myself, I think a lot of the stuff has been discussed. Keep in mind that when we did the great separation we have today, that that was fully paid for. Well, those days don't exist today. So first of all, to the Vice Mayor, sitting on the Transportation Authority, I've heard the same thing, moderate growth with the potential to go high, but it is supposed to be the moderate growth on the tracks. But yes, the projects have cost just so much more. As you said, 330 million for Burlingame. So funding does concern me. I know we have federal state. I know we can ask the Transportation Authority. As the City of San Bruno, I sent a letter, so did Mayor Matsumoto at the time, to ask for funding, which helped pay for some of this that we're dealing with now. But at the same time, now, today, the TA does not have that pool that it once had to totally fund a project to that magnitude and require cities to put in a portion if we can't get it from elsewhere. I also wanted to talk about the, you know, the water problem as far as it being under. I do want to have that addressed. Obviously, what we have right now was a pump issue that was not designed correctly or appropriately when that train, when the track was elevated. And so that's why we've had the floods. We've gotten, after a period of time, it better, but that's what caused that problem. But I know we've been very, I think they're doing better because of the new one that they're doing on 25th Avenue in San Mateo. They're very much taking into consideration any type of going underneath, and I think there's been some lessons learned, unfortunately, maybe at the cost from us. The lighting, I think, is critical. The length of the tunnel that the Vice Mayor brought up is important. I also wanted to bring up about the maintenance agreements and JPB. We have three members, as we, I think we know, that represent County of San Mateo, Mr. Collins, Mr. Stone, and Mr. Pine, that are a part of that JPB that we should always be in contact with if we have concerns. I don't want it to seem that staff, or get that impression, or staff feel it, that they don't try hard. And Mr. Tan had educated me when we came to the bird droppings, when we did not have the screens up underneath the overpass, it was because it hadn't gotten done. And the city staff had worked a few times to do what they could do. And I did have to phone and offer to drive down personally to see whoever I needed to at the office to say, you know, what's the problem? Now, they did it within 48 to 72 hours after that, but it shouldn't take that. And it's somewhat saddened because staff really tried. And it shouldn't be, it takes an elected in order for that to occur. It should come with that proper protocol expectations, and they achieving what they've agreed to. So I think that is important, but we also have ways for that. But I want to let it be known, staff does try hard, and sometimes I think they go through a bureaucracy, unfortunately. Looking at the potential for the cost and what have you, I'm thinking the underground option as well. I'm looking at the walkway, and I know it needs for ADA, it's really high and it's large, and it just towers over some of the homes that are on the one-story and two-story. And I don't know if that would look like we're dividing up that area, or boxing it in, or the aesthetics of it. I think Councilman Mason had asked too, is like, what's harder on the neighborhood, right? The under, the over, and then what's better on the noise going forward? I think that's important. So those are, I didn't really have questions, because I think my colleagues asked some really great questions. Those are some of my comments. City Manager, you've heard from all of us. Is there any follow-up or questions you want to ask of us? You probably don't want to, but maybe you do.
Well, no, I think it's been a robust discussion, and we will take the comments about doing additional outreach and posting on social media before the Tuesday meeting. But the only thing I wanted to point out, and no decision is needed tonight, but in the renderings that staff showed on Slide 50 and 51, we begun and ended the entry point at Bay Hill Circle. And that was done strategically, because at some point, there will be a decision for council, once we get a little bit further in the designs, to be where do you want that entry and exit point on the west side to be. And doing it at Bay Hill Circle, staff took some liberty there, because you can have a nice flow point from the beginning and entry of that crossing through Bay Hill Circle to Tanfran. And so, as we plan this project, we can approach BART and try and have a improvement upon Bay Hill Circle and make that more of an inviting area for people to walk to and from Tanfran as a traverse this neighborhood. But I just wanted to point that out at that crossing at Bay Hill Circle. That's going to be a decision point at some point, but it doesn't have to be now.
Okay, well, thank you, Hey Wan. Thank you very much for your report, your detail. Thank you for the outreach that you're going to reprovide before our 25th, as was asked, but appreciate all the work. And thank you to the others who also came in and stayed with us this evening to help answer those questions. So thank you to everyone. And now with that, we're going to move on to the second item under Study Session, and that is discuss possible project initiatives for potential future Measure K funding. City Manager.
So I will share my screen. So if you all can see that, this study session item, we have done some preliminary research and have a few cost estimates for potential projects that we can request Measure K funding for. And so at your last council meeting, there was a direction to staff to begin this process. We've done a little bit of work, and we want to return to you here tonight for feedback and guidance. In order to develop a request for Measure K, in any of these options, we need to do quite a bit more work on refining our cost estimates and putting together that package. And so we're here to provide some information, options, and then ask for further direction. So with that, the direction that we were given were to put together a list of potential projects for council consideration, approximately at the $200,000 mark, looking to potentially making a Measure K request from the supervisors, districts, funds, or potentially another pot of Measure K. And so with that direction, we want to talk about potential projects in four areas. City Park, field improvements, two subcategories under there, various improvements at Tomlara Field at Diamond, which is Diamond One, and field lights at Diamonds One through Four. I'm sorry, One through Three. The cost estimate that we have there is approximately 145,000. Project Area Two, our library interior renovations.
To the chair, do you see the presentation? Because I only see like the first page.
I see the first page as well. It's not moving.
You're not advancing through the presentation, that you were just saying the...
See, why is that paused? Okay. Let's try it again. Can you see it now?
Okay. You want to switch views because we're seeing your notes on the side?
Yeah.
Is that?
Not yet.
Operator error.
We better hurry up, or we're not going to be able to see Marty anymore. There you go.
He just has to keep smiling.
There you go.
Okay. So again, four categories that we wanted to, that we want to talk through tonight. City Park Field Improvement, estimated cost 145,000. Various improvements at Tomlara Field, Diamond One, and then field lights for Diamonds One through Three. Library Interior Improvements at an estimated cost of $84,000, replacing the carpet and reupholstering some furniture. Potential improvements at Palsy Park, the fountains, potentially making those planners and other plaza improvements, and then some potential improvements downtown, tree planting, Centennial Plaza. And then we also have trash capture and magazine receptacles, or magazine racks. So field improvements, we took a look at a number of things at City Park, and I want to remind council that we have a couple other projects that will be happening pretty soon in City Park. One is the development of our beautiful new aquatic and recreation center, and those plans are set to come to the Park and Rec Commission, and then the City Council later this calendar year. But we also have a small project of approximately 150,000 that was funded in large part from Measure K funds, to supervisors, Pine, Canapa, each gave $75,000 from their district funds, and then the city put in some funds. And so at your meeting on August 26th, your very next meeting, next Tuesday, is that the 26th? It's the 25th, we are asking you to approve a contract for approximately 170,000 for various projects related to the Tomlara Grandstand. And there is a project with the Lions to improve the snack bar there. And so as we were thinking of those improvements that are going to happen in City Park, there are some other things that are in very much in need of improvement, and our unfortunately, lack of funds to make improvements there, has a number of repairs that are needed. And all of these projects are sort of geared toward improving that entire area. So in three years, when we have our new aquatic and recreation center and Tomlara Field, we won't have, right next to it, some other things that need improvement. And so repainting the light poles, there are six infield poles that are 70 feet tall, and six outfield poles that are 85 feet tall. They really need to be repainted, but given their condition, it requires grinding and sanding of all those poles, and then a painting process with a two-part epoxy. And we have an estimate for that work for all 12 of those poles at that height of $70,000. Dugout improvements at Tomlara, so Diamond One, $7,500 per dugout, an estimated cost of $15,000. Fence repair at Tomlara at $50,000. And then the wood backstop and sideboard replacements at Tomlara at $10,000. I will say that we could also have some fencing repairs, dugout improvements, and backstop repairs at Diamonds Two and Three. But given the amount of money we're talking about, this is what we came up with initially. It can very well be expanded. And so next, we have a few pictures that we wanted to show you, and this is of the fencing, where you can see the cyclone fencing bowling out and toward the far area there, sort of a large bulge, really requires replacement of a number of poles and replacement of the cyclone fencing. Sideboards that are rotting, missing in other areas. An existing image of Tomlara Park, these were all taken this week, of the rusting fence, the bulging cyclone fencing, and the, one of the outfield poles, I think this is the 85-foot pole, but you can see just the chipping paint and the work that really needs to be done along all of these poles. Another, other images of the fencing and the backstop board replacements that are very much in need of sprucing up. And so again, the thought was, with those other projects occurring, including these, and making these improvements would be a nice addition. The other category was improvements at the interior of the library, estimated cost of $84,000, replacing all of the carpets in the library main floor in mezzanine level. Approximately 12,000 square feet of carpet replacement. And then reupholstering five of the fabric chairs in the reading room, and one just outside of the reading room, at a cost of $4,000. Reupholstering those chairs actually will be very much appropriate for where we find ourselves with COVID-19, and reupholstering them in a non-pervious material or a vinyl, like some of the other chairs. That way, we can wipe them down on a regular basis. So just have some images. These are the chairs in the reading room, and some images of the carpet, in need of replacement, and could be a estimated project under the Measure K request. The other project category that we wanted to talk about, our potential improvements at Palsy Park, we have not done the work to provide a cost estimate, and would like feedback from the City Council, if you would like us to talk to contractors and get some informal bids, and what type of improvements you would like. I know this was mentioned. So one concept is to adjust and essentially convert the fountains into a plant, into planners that will require work with sealing them and creating a drainage system. I think we all know that these are shut off due to leaks that happened when the fountains were active, as well as the wind would carry the water onto the walkway. But they were shut off, and I think we all agree, as an eyesore, it's something that we would like to improve. Potential redesigning portions of how the plaza is used by adding additional plaza furniture, and also concepts of having a cafe cart, or having, doing a curb cut into the sidewalk, and allowing for food trucks, and we'll show an image of that. These are images of the type of cafe carts that we could seek to carve out a space for. There may be some minor work needed in the plaza in order to bring the appropriate utilities for something like this to occur. But they also have cars that work fully standalone. What I wanted to say here is that if this is an option that the City Council would like staff to pursue, it may not be something that we have to request Measure K funds for. We could develop an RFP and see if there was a vendor, see if there was a vendor that would like to set up shop at no cost to the city, or depending on the market feasibility, there could be a small no cost to the city or depending on the market feasibility, there could be a small rental charge. But it was mentioned to potentially have a cafe card of some sort here. And so we wanted to provide examples of that. This is an image from our downtown streetscape plan. It is a rendering that was developed for the plan. Think of this as a palette that can be changed. But in this rendering was a space for food trucks or they could be the cafe cart examples that were shown in the prior slide. But I did want to show this slide because there was some thought given to this area in the downtown streetscape plan as a way to activate this plaza. There could be additional trees that are added. There could be additional furniture. As we know, there is a development plan for right across the street from this area that will have some ground floor retail. And so that will create more activity around this space in the future as well. Another rendering from the streetscape plan, which removed the center fountain and adjusted the the pathway here and that stair step fountain structure that's there now. What I want to say is doing anything like this cannot be done for two hundred thousand dollars. It honestly would would cost more than that just to design it. And so what we would really be looking at around two hundred thousand dollars are minor improvements to what's there existing and potentially seeing how much it would cost to make improvements to the existing concrete fountain infrastructure where we could have appropriate drainage and fill it in and make it a functional planning planner area. For downtown, there are three areas that we would like to talk about. Council mentioned potentially planting trees, removing some of the trees that are in existing round planner planters and replacing those with in-ground trees. There are also potential improvements that we can pursue in obtaining estimates for at Centennial Park, potentially installing a decomposed, installing decomposed granite around the fountain, installing new seating and public tables and chairs. And a project to reactivate replacement of the news racks and trash receptacles that depending on the type and amount that are replaced, two hundred thousand dollars could be a we could expend all of that on some improvements to the public realm. And I have some images in a little bit to show that. So these are those round planners that we have now. Some have just plants, others have trees. It was mentioned that potentially putting plants in the ground in the future is desirable. That was envisioned in the downtown streetscape plan where we would have a palette of like street furniture along the entire San Mateo Avenue and replace the trees that are in the planner boxes with in-ground trees. We can look to do some of that, but two hundred thousand dollars unfortunately is not enough. Because while we did do the downtown streetscape plan, in order to find the precise locations, we would need to employ the services of a landscape architect to truly lay out what the future San Mateo streetscape will be at more of a schematic and design level. So when we put the trees in the ground, we know that they will be appropriate for all of the various other street elements that will take place. And so staff did look into it a little bit and and we think that there's some work that can be done here. But if there's a desire to go the entire stretch of San Mateo Avenue and plant trees, trees, while the the cost of trees is relatively inexpensive, doing the work in a way that would be consistent with the future streetscape is going to require additional design cost and maybe cost prohibitive for the type of project we're looking at now. However, we can pick out a certain street elements like trash receptacles and bike racks and potential benches and place those within the existing streetscape that could be relocated once the whole streetscape design is created and implemented. With regard to Centennial Plaza, currently, this is what Centennial Plaza looks like now. It is worth mentioning that staff have has been in conversations with West Coast Cafe and they very shortly will be utilizing this asphalt portion of Centennial Plaza along the the walkway leading from the parking lot for outdoor dining. And so we will be removing these benches, their benches in the front and allowing West Coast Cafe to set up tables here to take those off of the sidewalk area. But one of the the concepts was to install decomposed granite or some other hard compacted surface and have a plaza area where we would open up Centennial Plaza for people to walk around and potentially permanently install some tables. The, as you can see with these chairs, you may or may not be able to see it. They look movable, but they're actually, there's a little ring here where you can see how it's affixed to the ground. And so there are things you can do to put out public, create a nice public plaza with DG that could be relatively inexpensive, something we could do with around two hundred thousand dollars. It will take some design services, but we we think it's a project worth investigating if the city council desires to do so. And that ends the the presentation. We're here for comments. We just want a little bit more direction and or other ideas from the city council as we begin the process to develop the ask.
Thank you, city manager for the report. And why don't we see who's prepared to go first? And then we'll just take each person again and ask the questions or and maybe make some suggestions. There he's back. Yeah, good. Council member Davis and then council member Mason.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. Thank you, Javon. Some some good ideas there. So I'll start with the park. I think with the improvements to the grandstand, I think it would be nice to see some additional improvements to that. San Bruno Park is really a beautiful park and used by a lot of people. I have made comments about how beautiful it is walking, driving through. There are people who come and visit and just can't believe it. So I would really like to see some of those improvements happen. Not so keen on the seventy thousand for the poles to be painted. I think there's a lot more that we can do with that money. So I'd like to maybe see how we could do some different things, not just the the improvements at the park. So I see that the dugout improvements are a great idea. I think the fence repair. An additional thing I'd like to add is if you come from the parking lot where staff parks during the day and you walk toward the bleachers, there's it goes from asphalt to mud during the winter time or depending on what day. And there's some really uneven pavement there. And I've seen, because you get grandparents to come there, I've seen them sort of like, you know, unbalanced. So it would be great to maybe cement that in and get rid of the mud. I think that's an important improvement for safety. The backstops, yeah, it'd be great to get all backstops, replace it all, all, all diamonds. But I know that that's not impossible, that's not possible as well. So I'd like to see some stuff go toward the park. But I'd also like to see some improvements to the library. I think that the library is something that hasn't gotten the attention that it needs. So I don't know if just doing chairs or carpet is really the best need for the library. I don't know that. I'm not someone who's in living there and breathing there to see what it is. I know they have issues with bathrooms, the lack of bathrooms. So there's probably a whole list of things that the library needs. But I would definitely like to see some funding go to the library. And for Posey Park, I I just, I don't know the process and how we got to where we got, but it's terrible that we had this fountain that spent a ton of money on something that really sits there empty. I'd like to just see it filled up and you can put some really nice succulents in there. They do so well in San Bruno without really much attention. And you can really make that sort of beautiful. And then some of the other things I think can come later. And so those are my comments.
Councilor Mason.
Yeah, my my first choice is just what everybody sees when they drive into San Bruno, which is an unfinished Posey Park. So I know that we can't, I understand that we can't do all the bells and whistles, but just filling the fountain is my first choice and painting to make sure that it doesn't look half done. And I also think we might have the best argument with that because it's right at the Caltrain Station. And then I would definitely support, secondly, the library. My, you know, we go there with the kids since pre-COVID and all the kids sit on the ground. They sit on the rugs. They are old, I agree with that. And that reading room is really busy. So I do agree with what city manager Grogan said about cleaning them. Right now you really can't clean them. And then the, I mean, the park, I think there's already going to be one hundred and fifty thousand dollars allotted. I think if there's going to be money spent on a park, we might want to start looking at Bel Air on the east side. That San Bruno Park is going to have a sixty million dollar aquatic center. And I'd honestly be curious to know if our staff can do some of that work because I think we but we're going to eventually be budgeting or we have budgeted around parks. So I think I'd be curious to know if our staff can do any of that work. And then I think our downtown, I love all the ideas of the downtown, but I will say if we can hit Posey Park, then that is part of downtown. And I think that's one less thing to worry about on our streetscape plan. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Medina or Vice Mayor of Councilor Medina?
Sure.
Hands in first.
Thank you. Yeah, we're talking about two hundred thousand dollars here and it would be great to do everything. But I've heard forever about how we're going to do something downtown. Two hundred thousand dollars is is not enough to do Posey Park. But staff can look into it. But from my understanding of the presentation, it's not going to, it's not going to do what we would like there. We've talked about putting new garbage cans downtown. It was we we thought we had a project approved. We need it, we need to start doing stuff in downtown. And so as much as I love baseball and being out in the park, we need to do something downtown, you know? And and I want to see something done there. And if getting a couple of trees in the ground or hiring that landscape architect. We've talked about it forever. Previous councils have talked about it forever and nothing ever happens. So I'm 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 sure we could buy new chairs, you know, four thousand, five thousand here. But I think that the majority of that money needs to be downtown. And I'd like to see it in trees and and with the garbage cans and the, I don't even know if we need to have newspaper racks anymore. If we're not required to have them, then let's not have, let's get rid of them. People are reading newspapers. Few people are reading newspapers, they're getting all their information online. So I'm, I want to see this, I want to see the money downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So first of all, city manager, thank you for this presentation. There's a lot of really good ideas in here and all definitely worthy projects. I think the the improvements to City Park are, I mean, there are some improvements there that we've been talking about doing for a long time. And this is going to be right in front of our brand new rec and aquatic center. And so I've heard people refer to City Park as is really the jewel of San Bruno. And it is a regional draw. I know people come from all over the area to use our park, the picnic facilities, the baseball fields. And, you know, when we're talking about, you know, asking for regional funds, it does seem to make sense that if we if we do really provide something that's a benefit to the region, it may be an easier ask and potentially something that would get support from all all five supervisors that that will have to vote on this. So I like the idea of making those improvements. Definitely in favor of doing something downtown. So if we end up going that route, I know that there's a lot of improvements to be made there. But again, with, you know, with a small amount of money, it again, it starts making more sense to make this request tie into other things that we're already funding, things that are already in progress so that we can do more with that pool of money. So again, that seems to make sense to do. It seems to make more sense to do the the park project instead. And in talking about, you know, doing the the downtown projects, depending on the timing, I know right now Caltrain ridership is way down and trying to get somebody interested in doing a interested in doing a coffee cart there. That's something that may may not be immediately a big appeal, but I think eventually that would be a great idea to provide that kind of amenity. But maybe that's, you know, longer term thinking. You know, as we talk about, we talked earlier about the Park and Lou fees and the fund that we have for that. And I'm wondering if that could be a potential source if we're talking about developing a public area, either Posey Park or Centennial Plaza. If we're going to do improvements at Centennial Plaza, I think that lends itself well currently to what we're hearing. I'm hearing from constituents that they're interested in outdoor dining. So the 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 fact that you know, that that little plaza is going to be used partially for for some of that, if we can expand some of that, if we can create a public area where people can come downtown, buy food and maybe even just, you know, have to walk a couple of blocks, at least have an area where they can sit and eat and even during social distancing, you know, make some use of that outdoor space. That that to me has a lot of appeal. And if we decide to go the library project, I, you know, the library is shabby. I know there's a lot of projects there. We've done a lot of piecemeal improvements. So I know that it definitely needs some attention. But again, that's probably going to be closed for a while and we haven't really identified an opening date. So you know, maybe that makes it less of an immediate priority, but definitely something that needs to stay on the radar. And, you know, if it's if it's going to be carpeting, I'm wondering if maybe if there's a more durable floor covering that we could consider instead of carpet that might be a better, a better fit for high traffic areas and also for cleaning if we're going to be dealing with coronavirus for a few years. And maybe that's something that should be considered.
For myself, you know, maybe our, like you said, it's not going to go to do everything, but I've heard from most of us, I was trying to take notes as we talked, seems that everybody wants would like to do something downtown. Looked like a majority came up with maybe the fountain. Even the garbage cans, as Councilman Medina said, you know, that that's something too. We had talked about that to me as easy. I would agree with him as well, the newspaper racks. Keep in mind, when they got replaced, the city didn't purchase those. The newspaper companies purchased those. That's why they have to be noticed. And that's why they have to be notified because technically they're their property, not ours. So it's not as easy for us just to remove it. But at the same time, as we know, it has evolved with newspaper companies. And so there are probably fewer that may be needed. And so I could see that maybe that's not as much of a priority. But even garbage cans, it was the Rotary Club that wanted to potentially, if you go on to Laurel and San Carlos that has some type of mention of the organization. And they were willing to maybe, maybe, that was before, you know, assist and maybe purchase some. So I think we can leverage some things too, to maybe make a little few other things happen. You know, the fountain would be nice to have something done. And the library with the vice mayor totally agree as far as, you know, just to run to do it, but really you have to get something that's durable and with the COVID and and that, we want something that's going to be long lasting, but also is realistic to what needs to be going forward. And as far as over on the grandstand and in the city park, you know, I do see those things. The fence has gotten pretty bad. you know, I do see those things. The fence has gotten pretty bad and has probably been that way for a little bit. But I think some of those improvements are, I didn't really hear anybody talk about painting of the light poles. That was a no. For the most part, no one's mentioned that. I didn't really hear other than a couple of items at the, the fence or grandstands. Didn't hear the majority of us, I mean, I didn't hear a lot of other, did hear something in the library, but was wondering if it was the immediate need or need to what I gathered with my comments. City Manager, did you have questions or need more feedback or additional clarification from us?
Yes, I think what we need is specific direction so we can go back and develop a firm cost estimate, cost estimates and a ask to the county on the city council's behalf. The only thing I, I want to say about the field lights, and I, I totally understand $70,000 to paint field lights doesn't sound enticing and it's a lot of money. Whether we do that now or later, it frankly is something we're going to have to do to protect the integrity of those lights. And, and so paint, paint protects against corrosion. And so as that paint continues to fade and chip away, that is a important preservation aspect for that infrastructure there. So I just want to make that, that comment. I, I know it's not that immediate thing that wows everyone, but it is an important thing to do. And part of our challenge unfortunately is we just haven't had enough money to maintain our infrastructure the way we all want to.
Yeah. And, and thank you for clarifying that. It's not just a, a wish thing. It's, it's actually a needed thing at some point. It's going to have to be done. And then one thing that the Vice Mayor said, which I think is kind of important too, is, you know, we have to understand if it's more on a regional aspect, which, but it's discretionary funds that the supervisor started to receive back in 217. But you know, what's going to get the supervisor to, to want to sign on to this, to bring it forward, to ask of their board members too. So it, it's about, you know, what, what can we ask that will also get us to the end result and pass, you know, in the, in the end zone? Councilmember Mason?
Oh, I saw the Posey. My understanding is that an estimate had been done some time ago. I don't know how long ago, but that there's an estimate out there. And I love all the designs for everything, but we're talking about $200,000. So I would just want to focus on getting the fountain done, painted, like Councilmember Davis said, some landscaping. But just done so that when you drive in, it doesn't look like it was just never finished. So that, that would be, that would be my ask.
And, and to answer your question, I believe there was an estimate done. And as far as plastering it or as far as getting it re-functioned, I believe my memory is correct, there also was, here's what the ongoing cost would be to continue to operate the fountain, which would be on city's dime. And here's what it would cost in order to operate it for the maintenance, meaning parks, to maintain the vegetation. So I don't, can't remember exactly the month or year, but yes, I, I agree that I recall that as well. Oh, Mr. Tan, sir, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, sorry. I, I'm here actually. Yeah. So sorry to kind of chime in.
How many ever doubted you for a moment? We knew you've been there the whole time.
Yeah. So you're absolutely correct, Mayor. Um, yeah, you know, we brought the item to council several years ago for water contract to, you know, resurface the entire fountain area. But during that discussion, there are some, you know, additional thoughts to have in that landscape instead of, you know, reinstating the fountains because of due to maintenance costs. So, you know, the city, you know, we ended up rejecting the bids and then, you know, we had to go back to the drawing board. So the, the, the the work was then included as part of the downtown streets that's planned to be looked at. And that's what happened, you know, to the Posey Park, but Posey Fountains.
Right. So, so to clarify, there were some cost estimates to repurpose the fountain, but what we're talking about now is taking away the water aspect and making it a landscape planner. And there are no cost estimates for that.
That's correct. Vice Mayor?
Just i- in response to what the city manager raised about the, the light poles. I, I think about, of all the projects that we talked about, you know, the, the ball fields really are suffering from deferred maintenance. And the stuff is falling apart. And the longer those poles stay unpainted, the rustier they're going to get and potentially have to be replaced at a much, much higher cost. And so I was just going to reiterate my support for that project because as we've heard, there, there are even some potential safety issues going on with, with the bleachers and everything. Some of it's being addressed. If we could address more of it and potentially save ourselves some money, maybe those should be prioritized ahead of aesthetic projects.
Councilmember Davis?
I guess the question is, is could we do both? Could we take care of that planner at Posey Park? Or, you know, can staff do some of that work instead? I mean, it, I don't know how much work is needed to put in, you know, base rock and some soil and put some plants in. Since it had a fountain, I guess assume it has a drain drainage, right? So that would be a question. And then, yeah, I, I think when we talk about regional and what we're going to do with the money, I think that the San Bruno Park has the biggest impact in our community. I mean, it is used by so many members of our community. I'd like to put money toward the Posey Park and, and other street scape things, but I think we have to start looking at new development and funneling money toward the downtown area because the downtown area is going to need a lot more money than this small little amount. And so I, I'd like to seek to go toward the park and try to address that fountain, the fountain.
To the mayor? City Manager?
So I think I can narrow this down. What, what, what I think we're hearing from council is a preference of Posey Park and some improvements at City Park. And the question is, how much is it going to cost to improve the fountain and improve that area? And, you know, if that's 50,000, our estimate for the work that we're proposing at City Park is 45, 145. So, you know, that's slightly under 200 and maybe we can do both. So what I can say is we, we, we sort of came in here with four ideas. And if, if what we're doing is narrowing them down to two, Posey Park and City Park and the various improvements that are in there, primarily improving the fountains, potentially converting those to planners. And, and just general improvements in that area to, to make it a more aesthetically pleasing plaza, as well as various improvements at Diamonds one through three. And if you're, if you want staff to come back, to go away and put some more meat on the bone for those two items and come back, we're, I, I think that's, that, that's clear direction and we will work to accomplish that.
I just, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. We're, we're going to be asking, so there's already $150,000 going to San Bruno Park. We're going to be asking for another $150,000 to be across the street from the $60 million aquatic center. I, I, I still think that the other projects are more desperately needed. So I, I'm still with Posey, but I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I understand that and I, I hear that point, but it's kind of like remodeling your house and forgetting to paint your driveway, your garage door, right? You've got this big, beautiful house. And yet your garage door is this thing that sort of stands out there. So it would just be nice to be able to put some final touches on remodeling the bleachers, the snack shack. And I think it would be nice just to get some final, some improvements there. But with that said, I don't want to lose, lose sight of those things we need to get done. I agree. I think the libraries, those, it's, it's been something that's been put in the back burner. And it doesn't get the attention that it needs. But I think that if, if we can continue with, you know, new projects coming in, new funding sources, that we can put money towards these things. And I think that this is a good list that we start with and we make sure we keep the list, knowing what those top items are, are, are what they are. And so we don't lose sight of them so that they can be addressed.
And the only thing, I mean, we, City Manager, you did talk about the Park and Lou fees and, you know, thankfully we received three, $3 million. And obviously with other elements, there will, there'll be more monies coming in. So trying to look at it, you know, strategically, what, what can we get that's going to provide a service to this community, image or, or aesthetics or whatever? But knowing that we have this other funding source that can also take care of some of those. I don't want to duplicate. I want us to have these monies go to where we don't have a funding source, or we may not have an opportunity.
So what was your, what was your suggestion, Mayor Medina?
To the city manager, I wanted to ask him. Because parks, you were saying like the Centennial, okay, got that. You were saying at the Posey. So is a fountain included in, in Park and Lou, is it not? The, the light poles, does that include because it's an improvement or et cetera?
Yeah. So to the mayor and the city council, if I step up on the balcony, what, what we're doing here is a little bit of a mini capital improvement project planning. And the reality is, is we picked four, four areas, there, there's likely 40 areas that, that could, that could be on this list. And what I think we're, we're, we're trying to do is narrow down to a project or a set of projects that one, first and foremost, will be a significant and notable improvement to the community. Two, being something that the county will say yes to, and the supervisors will say yes to for their district dollars. And then three being something, you know, we can execute on in a fairly rapid basis as a quick win. And and so we're, I don't know the, how much Posey Park and the planner improvements will cost. We really need to do some work on that. And so, you know, maybe it's 25,000, maybe it's 75,000. I, I actually at, at this point really don't know. We really need to do some investigation. We, it was fairly easy for us to put together the cost of the field improvements because we have existing contacts with some contractors and staff through their, their normal maintenance work, has some pretty good ways to estimate those costs. Because they're more classic things that, that, that we repair and or contract out for. And the same is true for carpet and reupholstering. The work at Posey Park, we're really going to have to engage with someone and do some further investigation on what's needed there. Now, we will do it in, in rapid fashion. But what I, what I'm hearing from council, if there's any sort of coalescing, it's downtown, likely sort of Posey Park. And then also a significant number of council members saying, making improvements at City Park with the other improvements that will occur around there. Sounds like something beneficial and something that the county may say yes to. What I will also say is that there are other potential pots of money, the Park and Lou fees, like we talked about. We are also applying for and looking into Prop 68 money that, that could come to bear for some of these projects. And so I would say with broad direction, if council would like to narrow it down to Posey Park and, or wherever council would like to narrow it down to, we'll go back and do the work. But what I, what I'm hearing is Posey Park and City Park. And we will come back to you with those estimates for a final decision. This is not us walking away, developing the ass and not coming back to city council. So we'll put some more meat on the bone and come back to you.
Okay. So Posey Park, City Park, I, I think most folks had some thinking about doing San Mateo Avenue downtown. Posey Park seemed to be, like you said, final touch. Everybody has a little different perspective. It's coming back. But for what the manager just articulated, is that the consensus give the, the manager direction?
Yes.
Yes, from Mr. Salazar. Yes, from Mrs. Davis. Mr. Medina?
I'll go with the consensus, but downtown has been, has been neglected by many councils over the years and not, not putting any money into our downtown. I mean, I believe pretty much everybody here that's ever ran said they were going to do something about our downtown. But, but, um, I, I believe we're going to come back and find out that Posey Park is going to cost a lot more money. But it's fine. I'll go along with what the council's saying.
Yeah, and I'm with Marty. Posey Park's my first choice. I think that's part of downtown. Library gets a, what, 160,000 visits a year. We've done nothing for the library. But the three, there is a consensus, so we'll go with it.
Okay. Well, I've, I've heard from everyone in the consensus on the Posey Park. So I, I haven't heard one person say no to that, including myself. The, I, I would think what I am also hearing too, at Posey Park is not economically feasible. Let's say they come back and say it's a, whatever it is. Then can something else be done in Lou? And that's why I will come back. And then, okay, so the city manager, do you have the direction you need or do you need more clarification? You're on mute.
Sometimes I like you. So I mean, what, what I've heard is Posey Park, a yes from all five, looking into enhancements that we can do there. What enhancements we can do there? Again, right? 200,000 is a lot of, isn't a lot of money. So we're probably not touching the concrete. We're not touching any of the built infrastructure. It's sort of saying, is there appropriate drainage or what, what appropriate drainage we need to do to sort of fill it in with rocks, gravel, dirt and plants? And we could then continue to go on and say, okay, well, that costs X and how much more can we spend making other improvements to Posey Park? And so if council wants to so direct for us to focus on Posey Park, we will do that. If council wants to direct us to focus on Posey Park as priority number one, and then also simultaneously look into another item, we will do that. But, but what I've heard right now is Posey Park, yes, from everyone.
Well, and for me, I, I mean, I think, yes, you're correct, what you just said, but I think specifically the fountain. So as far as when you said, well, if we want to go out further than that, the cement or the sidewalk, no, I'm, I'm saying let's focus on the fountain to minimize the overall cost. You know, and then, then, then see where that comes. And that may deter us to where, you know, we, we want to say, let's go forward with garbage cans. Let's go forward with this and that, you know? Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So just to get clarification, Mayor Medina, if, so if we put, I, I don't think it's going to cost 200,000 to have the fountain taken care of. So where would you put the remainder of the money? Are you interested in putting some money in the library or are you interested in putting some money in the park? I think we, I think we kind of need to understand that.
Yeah.
More likely to go with consensus, but I don't know what consensus is.
No, the Posey Park is already not only consensus, it's everybody. And then I had heard looking to the park. And that is where my, my next thing would be, yes, that's, that's.
And then one final question. So Michael brought up a good point where you could take Park and Lou fees and put them into a facility that is going to add more bandwidth, more hours, more ability to have some sort of facility. So could monies come from there for, for Posey Park to improve that area? Because we are considering a Posey Park, right? And part of that could come with re-improving the fountain. And then you could put that money toward the library instead. So I think.
Well, that was my question to the manager, was just that. Does the fountain come under the Park and Lou fees? That was my question on the Centennial Plaza, which I guess is considered a plaza, not a park, but whatever semantics.
Well, not the fountain, but if you were to make other improvements to this facility to offer something else, now it's not just a park, it is a park with these amenities. And while you're approving those amenities, you now kind of throw in, well, let's fix the fountain while we're here anyway. So that's where I'm getting.
Got it. Thank you.
So the Park and Lou fees are broadly defined. And yes, you can enhance an existing park. With a, a large part of the Park and Lou fee money came from 111 San Bruno, which is right across the street from here. And so that is something we can look into. What I, what I would say to the city council is, I, I think twofold. One, we will have overage on our aquatic and rec center. And so we have been at least flagging a significant portion of, of that fund balance to help out with the aquatic and rec center. Two, I want us to be cognizant of taking this $200,000 request for Measure K and making it a full sort of additional capital improvement project planning on top of the budget that we just approved with the resources that we just approved in there. Because if we sort of take this opportunity to develop a new initiative, we may very well be pushing off other initiatives that we've already planned for. we may very well be pushing off other initiatives that we've already planned for and budgeted. So what I, but what I hear from the city council is, we certainly want to do work at Posey Park. We potentially want to do work elsewhere. And what additional funds, looking at this list, can be brought to bear to do some of those things outside of the two hundred thousand dollars? We can go back and look at that. What I, what I think would be most efficient, so we can do the work and come back to you soon to make the ask soon, or the request soon, is a little bit more sort of definition on where you want us to focus. Because it does take some time to go out and get even ballpark cost estimates and do the investigation. And we want to just narrow our efforts down to what you as a council are most interested in. But, but if, I'm sorry, but if council wants us to concentrate on Posey Park right now, and that's the only direction we have, we will do that.
So, Javon, would it help you that if each of us said two things, or you've already heard about Posey Park and that you've heard about the fountain? So I don't think we need to ask that question again. So I think that's been clear by all members. So I think your next thing is to try to narrow the scope. Is it the rec center? Is it the library? I'm sorry, not the rec center, the field? Is that what you're asking us?
Yeah, so we brought in four, four sort of project categories. And it would be nice to leave today with at least having those narrowed down to two. And just two things will exhaust all the funds we're talking about. And so if we're going to look into Posey Park as priority number one, to be for the council.
Okay, could you share, share your screen, put that slide up, and then let's get council's consensus?
Just say for me, nothing's changed, so I think it's just a matter of where the funding can come from.
Okay, so you see the City Park improvements, you see the library, library internal, Posey Park, which we've already discussed, and downtown. So I think what Javon is asking is, the city manager is asking for a second item. And if we can quantify it as, you know, is it one, two or four? Would that be as assistance?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Laura, you had, oh, okay, thank you, thank you. Councilmember Davis, are you, my notes were one, is that still correct?
Yeah, one and three.
Thank you, one and three. Councilmember Medina?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think we were kind of getting a little sidetracked with what we could do with Park and Lou fund, funding.
Fees.
Fees, sorry. So with this two hundred thousand, I would have preferred the downtown and what, how are we going to make that look nicer when we're having outdoor seating? And if the intent is to help our businesses have that outdoor seating, that would be something that we would do. So that would, four would be my number one choice. Posey Park improvements would be my second. But, but I, I'll leave it at that.
And I'm sorry, I apologize. Was that Posey Park improvements or?
Yeah, Posey Park.
Okay, three. Okay, thank you.
Just for the fountain area, that's it. Very limited scope.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Salazar?
I still think there is a lot of compelling reasons to stay with number one as a priority. And secondary, secondarily, I'd say number four. Only because I like the concepts I saw for Centennial Plaza. And I think if we're talking about bringing people downtown, that is, in my opinion, a more ideal location for improvements than at the far end of downtown. So I like number four as, as number, as my number two.
Got it. Councilmember Mason?
Yep, Posey, I think of everything on the list. It's, it's the only unfinished project, and it's very visible. And then the library, because we've all cut the library, I think, already once or twice this year as far as things that it needed during the budget cycle. So I think the library just needs a lot of, a lot of, a lot of love. So, thank you.
I kept writing it down wrong. I apologize. So, okay, so yes, on the Posey Park, which is number three, is what you said, is three and two. So there's at least one, two, three, four of us on item three on the Posey Park. And then for myself, I'm going, the way, I'd like to have something in downtown, and I also like to do the City Park. But if you're, with the limited resources that we have, I'm going to say the, I'm going to also say number four for downtown. So three and four for Rico. I have one, two, three, number fours. And I have one, number two. And I have, if I'm saying that right, and one, two, probably two, number one. So the, the true majority has number, item number as far as the Posey Park improvements. And then I'm showing as far as the downtown has three this time. And please, folks, correct me if I wrote down something incorrect.
I think that's wrong.
And I could have been because I was writing down the wrong number when I was trying to do it quickly.
Mayor Medina, if you will, I wrote down the votes since they were being taken, if you would like me to read them.
I would appreciate that kindly.
So we have four votes for Posey Park, two votes for downtown, I'm sorry, three votes, I'm sorry, my mistake, three votes for downtown, one vote for the library, and two votes for City Park.
Okay, thank you. So that's what I, thank you, City Clerk. I appreciate that. Okay, so Javon, does that give you what you need for now?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, council. You can, there we all are. Okay, appreciate all that. And then we'll come back to, and then, like we said, Posey Park may not even be something that's feasible. And then we will have another opportunity to go to a different direction. Good evening, City Attorney Zaffarano. Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you, staff, for the presentations and the efforts. Thank you very much for council for being here. And we'll go ahead and adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty at seven PM. Everyone be safe. Good night.
Thank you. Have a good night.